Good evening. I'm calling the open session of the Monday, April 11th. Good evening. I'm calling the open session of the Monday, April 11th. What is today? The April 14th, 2025 Kim County Board of Education meeting. What is today? The April 14th, 2025 Kim County Board of Education meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
The motion was made by Ms. McKenzie. The second was, I think, Mr. Rhodes. The motion was made by Ms. McKenzie. The second was, I think, Mr. Rhodes. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor? Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No. Alrighty. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session Any opposed? No. Alrighty. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Also to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, Also to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice, to conduct collective bargaining negotiations, or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. to conduct collective bargaining negotiations, or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. I think that's it. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for those reasons. I think that's it. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for those reasons.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry, who was that? Ms. Dorsey. Ms. Dorsey has made that motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry, who was that? Ms. Dorsey. Ms. Dorsey has made that motion. Is there a second?
I second. I second.
Mr. Queen has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Mr. Queen has seconded it. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alrighty. We will go into closed session and resume our open session meeting at approximately six. Anyone opposed? Alrighty. We will go into closed session and resume our open session meeting at approximately six.
April 14, 2025, Board of Education meeting. I want to report on closed session. We met in closed session with superintendent. Our attorney was there. Mr. Hushin, the supervisor of human resources. We talked about collective bargaining and personnel. No decisions were made. When we went into closed session, the motion included legal advice. That was a mistake. That was a clerical error. So I just want to let you know that we did not get any legal advice or discuss that. So the next thing is I'm looking for our suit member to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda, which includes approval of the minutes of our March 10 open session, donation approval, and personnel action. of the minutes of our March tenth open session, donation approval, and personnel actions.
Motion to approve.
A motion is made by Ms. McKenzie. Is there a second?
I second.
I think Mr. Queen beat you to the buzzer there. Mr. Queen has the second. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All righty. Ms. Manley, is there anybody signed up for public participation? Thank you very much. Matthew Swanson, I will just remind you that the rules for public participation, our speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent or write a letter to the Board of Education and a response will be sent back to you. I did find my clock here, so when you're ready, Mr. Swanson, we start.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. I hope that you and I need to use your clock. I just want to briefly shout out three members of the KCPS staff who I categorize as going above and beyond. You may not know that Jody Boats and others are taking a dozen of students to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee for a band trip and competition at the end of next week. It's going to be great experience for many people, but it's a lot of work and I thank her and everyone else, including me. This happened, so thank you to all involved. I would like to thank once again the country. I have fully signed up to help shop. he has told me is one of the most challenging classes at KCHS and one of the most challenging AP exams that there is. So it takes a lot of work to do well in these exams. It's a great opportunity for our students. I appreciate his dedication and his time and I wish the students the best as they take the exam next month. Thank you, board. We have remarkable people working hard on behalf of our students in this district. We should be proud and grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Is there someone here from the Kent County Teachers Association tonight?
Yes, you're welcome.
Hey, there.
Hello.
So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but
Do you want to introduce yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm Kellyanne Turner. I'm the president of the teacher union here in Kent County. I'm also a seventh grade special education teacher at Star Middle School and I'm also the girls' and boys' soccer coach. We just started soccer club today, so I just left the That's it. I just want to say, you know, I'm looking forward to working with everybody individually and there's a couple teachers here and we're excited to hear, you know, the budget and, you know, what we can do for that moving forward.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Dr. McComas, you have a report?
Yes. So good evening, everyone. Let me start off the report with some really great news. While our bill in the General Assembly for our middle school construction project did not pass this season, we will still, however, be receiving state support for our project. So one of the things that did happen really on the last day of legislation, maybe it was the Friday before the last day, towards the very end, the General Assembly did issue an extra one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to our budget this year for the July first budget to go directly to support any maintenance needs for our current middle school facility for next year because we drove home the point of how expensive it is to keep our aging facility up and moving. And they put in, the General Assembly put in a preauthorization for four million dollars in the FY twenty-seven budget and an additional four million dollars in FY twenty-eight for a total of an extra eight million dollars on top of what they're already would normally fund for our project. Now, let me clarify, a preauthorization is the General Assembly indicating to the governor what they want to see happen. It is ultimately for the governor to do that or to not do that. So we, of course, will continue to champion with elected officials in the governor's office, the urgent need around the additional financial support to build a new middle school facility. So while we didn't walk away with exactly what we wanted asking for, we did not walk away empty-handed either. And I think the fact that the entire General Assembly preauthorized an extra eight million dollars is something to be hopeful about. But if you're not, we will not rest. We will continue to move forward in that. I also will say, I will bring forward in June a more detailed update on our middle school project and we will be scheduling a community meeting so people can see where the architectural design is. We're in the process of getting that set up. The Interagency Commission on School Construction, which is the state agency that helps oversee school construction projects and helps determine the amount of state funding, they have a meeting in early May and so I want to wait until I, that meeting's complete so I can bring forward to you and I'll have a presentation so people can go back and look at that in more detail. Once that meeting is over, I think will be a good time for me to put things in print on a presentation for you. So that is our good news around the middle school. I also want to take a moment to especially thank a delegate, Grace, for his tremendous leadership in our effort. He was really the strongest champion and Senator Hershey as well and they expanded their strategy this year and both of them were relentless in this effort and I would be remiss without thanking them. I also want to thank our commissioners that went over and testified as well as our board members. And in particular, I want everyone to know that we had more than seven hundred and fifty people sign a letter of testimony that went to the General Assembly. And so that's, you know, that it takes a village to get this accomplished and everyone, when we asked, people came forward and put out the effort. So the community's support for our middle school project is strong, thriving, and continuing to grow. The overall design of the new middle school continues to be developed and as I said, we're in the process of scheduling some community meetings so you can see where that design is. And then last but not least, I want to highlight another positive news item this evening before we go into spring break. This Wednesday will be our annual big Kent County Public Schools award celebration where we will be honoring Teachers of the Year from each of our school buildings and of course, you know, recognizing kind of top performers here. So at Galena Elementary, we have Rebecca Wooters Teacher of the Year, Amanda Jackson, Support Employee of the Year, and Abigail Saxton, Promising Educator of the Year. At Garnett Elementary School, it's Kathleen Devine is their Teacher of the Year, Regina Jones was their Support Employee of the Year, and Madison Kendall was their Promising Educator. At Rock Hall Elementary School, we had Drew Walters Teacher of the Year, Maria Gordillo Terrera, Support Employee of the Year, and Brianna Riordan was their Promising Educator. At Kent County Middle School, Sheriff Focassi Teacher of the Year for the middle school and BT King was their Support Employee of the Year. And at our high school, we had Johanna Cohen Teacher of the Year, Ralph Johnson Support Employee of the Year, and Gabriella Crissom, Promising Educator, and Patrick McColligan, Promising Educator. And at the central office, we had Muriel, I'm sorry, Morrell Craft, Support Employee of the Year. And every one of these individuals are integral part of their school system and we appreciate everything they do every day. So please come out to join us at the high school this Wednesday at five thirty where we'll be announcing the Kent County Public Schools Teacher of the Year, the Support Employee of the Year, and the Promising Educator winner from those finalists that I just identified. And lastly, our students and staff will be taking a well-deserved spring break starting this Thursday. We hope everyone enjoys their time with their families. I know I'm looking forward to it and getting the opportunity to rest and rejuvenate before we come back into the classroom on Tuesday, April twenty-second. And for our seniors, they really are beginning the final countdown to their time with Kent County Public Schools. So that concludes my superintendent's report.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Couch. Mr. Hushin, Golden Anchor Award?
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, School Board members. Tonight, I stand before you to honor our April Golden Anchor Award winner. This month, we had sixteen nominations sent in and this particular individual received six and without a doubt demonstrated his ability to go above and beyond, working across three different schools while we've been short-staffed at times. The gentleman thinks that he's here tonight to have a one-on-one meeting with me, Mr. Phil Seymour. Please stand up. I just want to hear some of the wonderful things your colleagues and staff and students have said about you since the time that you have started working for our school system. Mr. Phil has exceptional dedication, hard work, and a positive attitude at all times. He is extremely approachable and makes sure to greet everyone with friendly words of encouragement each and every day. He goes above and beyond to address every maintenance issue he could, constantly working diligently and hard to address every concern he could. He is always smiling, pleasant, and never stops working hard. He makes it a point to check in throughout the school day, stops in at health offices to see if they need anything. He is aware just about everywhere and as I said, he's been going between three different schools to help us in serious kinds of needs with different projects and things that we have going on. So if everyone can join me in honoring Phil Seymour as our April Golden Anchor
Thank you so much. You got me. Sorry. I was
Up. Good.
Are you the star of the show right now?
All right, everybody look at me. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
What?
Oh, my.
And always a smile, always a smile on the speaker, which I appreciate.
All righty. Are you doing the student athlete recognition as well?
Yeah, I'm going to start us off.
Okay.
All right.
Let it roll.
Thank you again. So something we wanted to start doing to elevate the wonderful and incredible things that our student athletes and our coaches are doing is we wanted to start to publicly recognize our outstanding achievements. So to join me tonight, I'm going to pull up Kent County High School Principal Chris Hempstead. Our athletic director, Kevin Taylor, was planning to be here tonight, but we have multiple events that were going on tonight at the high school, so he wasn't able to join. But to honor some of our outstanding athletes, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hempstead.
Good evening, Dr. McComas, President McGee, KCPS members of the board, and Kent County community members. Tonight, we will be celebrating the dedication, teamwork, and perseverance shown by three of KCHS student athletes and our coaches. So recognition number one, Scotty Ford, KCHS junior. Tonight, we are proud to recognize Scotty Ford, an outstanding junior at Kent County High School for his remarkable accomplishments in athletics and leadership. Scotty capped off a stellar wrestling season with a thirty-one-four record and a fourth-place finish at the Maryland one-A, two-A state wrestling championships in the highly competitive one-hundred-and-fifty-pound weight class. His road to the podium included dominant victories such as a nineteen-four technical fall in his open and bout and impressive wins in the consolation rounds showcasing his toughness, endurance, and elite skill. A three-time state qualifier and repeat Bayside Conference champion, Scotty also earned his second Kent Holiday Tournament title this season. He continues to raise the bar for Trojan wrestling and serve as a leader in the program. Coach Chris Unikus describes him as an athlete who sees perseverance as a tool to reach any goal, no matter how hard. But Scotty's impact extends far beyond the Met. He was recently named an honorable mention for the Bayside North All-Conference baseball team, proving his versatility as a multi-sport athlete. And tomorrow evening, he will be formally inducted into the KCHS interact club in recognition of his leadership, service, and commitment to the community. Scotty Ford exemplifies what it means to rise at KCHS. He is respectful, intentional, self-aware, and engaged in every aspect of school life. Please join me in celebrating Scotty's achievements, his character, and his continued pursuit of excellence.
Yeah. I was just thinking, you know, I don't
No, I don't.
I'm not.
Everybody look at me, big smile.
This evening, we proudly recognize Ramon RJ Peterson, a junior at Kent County High School for his exceptional accomplishments in athletics and leadership across multiple seasons. RJ is a state qualifier in both indoor and outdoor track and he recently finished fifth in the three-hundred-meter dash at the Class One-A Indoor State Championships, clocking a school record time of thirty-six-point-two-four seconds. Impressively, this was the fourth time this winter he reestablished the school record in that event, an incredible feat of consistency and drive. RJ is also a return-in state qualifier in outdoor track and kicked off this season with a first-place finish in the triple jump at forty-three feet, three inches, and a second-place finish in the long jump with a solid twenty-one feet even, missing a nineteen-eighty-three school record by just two inches. Beyond the track, RJ brings that same energy and focus to everything he does. He is a member of the KCHS AAEEBB Club, achieving academic
but also as the 2024 100-meter freestyle Maryland State Champion, setting a school-record time of 47.37 seconds. Moments earlier at the same meet, he earned the silver medal in the 50-meter freestyle with another school record of 21.13 seconds, demonstrating endurance, focus, and elite-level talent. Henry's dominance in the pool is matched by his academic excellence. He is the proud recipient of the prestigious Banneker Key Scholarship, the University of Maryland's premier full scholarship for top scholars across the state. This full ride reflects Henry's dedication to his studies and his growth as a well-rounded, driven student. He is a three-time MVP, a mentor to younger teammates, and has represented KCHS at the Maryland Boys State Program, where he explored civic leadership alongside his peers. Coach Grayson Wise says it best, "Henry was unbelievable. I'll never forget the look on his face when he stepped onto the podium, a moment filled with pride, perseverance, and years of hard work." Henry's journey is the definition of what it means to rise at KCHS. He's respectful, intentional, self-aware, and engaged in every way. We are beyond proud to call him a Trojan. Please join me in congratulating Henry Martinez, state champion, scholar, and future leader.
Everybody look at me. One, two, three. Now look at me. One more time.
It is with immense pride that I present Henry Martinez, a remarkable senior at Kent County High School, whose achievements in the classroom, in the pool, and as a student leader have set a new standard of excellence. Henry is being recognized tonight not only as a Bayside Conference Champion in swimming, but also as the 2024 100-meter freestyle Maryland State Champion, setting a school-record time of 47.37 seconds. Moments earlier at the same meet, he earned the silver medal in the 50-meter freestyle with another school record of 21.13 seconds, demonstrating endurance, focus, and elite-level talent. Henry's dominance in the pool is matched by his academic excellence. He is the proud recipient of the prestigious Banneker Key Scholarship, the University of Maryland's premier full scholarship for top scholars across the state. This full ride reflects Henry's dedication to his studies and his growth as a well-rounded, driven student. He is a three-time MVP, a mentor to younger teammates, and has represented KCHS at the Maryland Boys State Program, where he explored civic leadership alongside his peers. Coach Grayson Wise says it best, "Henry was unbelievable. I'll never forget the look on his face when he stepped onto the podium, a moment filled with pride, perseverance, and years of hard work." Henry's journey is the definition of what it means to rise at KCHS. He's respectful, intentional, self-aware, and engaged in every way. We are beyond proud to call him a Trojan. Please join me in congratulating Henry Martinez, state champion, scholar, and future leader.
Everybody look at me. One, two, three.
Yes. I'm not doing that one. Right? Sure?
We just got one. All right. Congratulations once again to our student athletes and their families, especially to the families for, you know, all the time that you spend, you know, taking your child to and from and practice and everything that goes into, you know, having a crazy life as a high school student athlete parent. So shout out to all of you as well. Last but not least, this past winter season, our Varsity Girls Basketball Team had an outstanding season, reaching the regional finals, falling just short of a regional championship. Without a doubt, it goes without question that the coaching staff led by Head Coach Ty Ray Johnson, with support from Chanel Copper and Antoine Reed, have brought exceptional energy to rebuilding this program and the success and growth that their student athletes have achieved over time and will continue to. But tonight, I want everyone to be aware that Coach Johnson was named the North Bayside Varsity Girls Basketball Coach of the Year. And knowing Coach Johnson, he will not own this award himself, and he's got an outstanding coaching staff under him. So with that said, we would like to honor Coach Johnson, Coach Copper, and Coach Reed for an outstanding job and the success that they had this season. So if everyone can join me in honoring our good coaches.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah. I know. On the Jeremy, thank you, Mr. Jeremy. Thank you.
Johnson, Sam, and Jeremy, very much. All right, big smiles. Everybody look at me. Good?
All righty. So, Dr. McComas, budget presentation.
Hi, now, do you hear the drum roll? I do. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and joining us this evening and for any of our community members, faculty, staff who are watching this evening, thank you for your time and attention. I'm bringing forward a proposed budget for FY '26 financial year, and really, the theme around this budget is rightsizing the organization to our post-COVID funding. And I'm going to take some time this evening to share with you why we are in the budget cycle that we're in. So first thing we're going to do is always anchor the work that we do in our priorities. Then we will look at what are our revenues and what are the constraints that we have with those revenues, and then ultimately talk about what exactly I'm proposing for us as a whole community. So what are our priorities? We know first and foremost, our students are our priority and they are the thing around which we make all decisions, easy decisions and truly difficult decisions. And you see the beautiful composition of our student demographics on this slide. We have been talking about our budget since the day I got here. Many of you joined us in the community conversations and we had over, I think, 500 people collectively engage in all of those conversations over probably about four-month period. We also, of course, have the expectations of the Maryland Blueprint. We have looked and examined our student data inside and out. We've put forward a theory of action around how to move our school system forward, and we identified through all of these processes that our priorities are to support our students who receive services, and those services may be individual education program services for learning disabilities, they may receive 504 services because of other health impairments, or they may be multilingual learners where English is their second language. We also naturally identified, when looking at our data, that literacy and mathematics is our priority, is our core mission, and the rigor and responsiveness of our middle school. We are working diligently to make sure that our middle school has a strong academic environment so that students are ready to hit ninth grade and hit those high school requirements. And then, of course, because of our values here in Kent County related to environmental education, the arts, and recognizing the career fields that are high-wage, in-demand careers, we will focus our academic programming, sort of characterize it as STEAM education, pre-K to 12. Many of these things we already have in place. It's really about pulling everything together. So again, here you can see the composition of our first priority, our students who receive some type of service against the whole student population. Here is our overview math, I'm sorry, literacy data, and you can see again with our third grade cohort, I spoke about this in a previous presentation, we really see the investment in the literacy transition to Orton-Gillingham as our universal approach to teaching literacy, paying off in that third grade cohort. I'd also like to highlight that third grade, they're the first group of students who have been in school since the disruption of the pandemic. So that's the first group that has had sort of a more normalized school experience. Here you see our mathematics, and again, I'd like to highlight third grade. We see that investing in literacy also has an amplifying impact positively with mathematics because our math assessments are fundamentally the dreaded word problem. So what are our resources and constraints? What you see here is our funding income. You see it broken down according to the funds that we get in foundation, career readiness, transportation. I'm not going to read the slide to you. I do want to take a moment to highlight where I say these funds are restricted in use. We receive, as school systems across the state receive, Concentration of Poverty Funds. We often refer to them as COP. You'll see COP on a slide later on. And these are funds that go to support wraparound services at schools that qualify for these funds because of the concentration of poverty in that particular school student population. Beginning July 1, our high school and going to elementary school will qualify for these funds for the first time. So all five of our schools in Kent County qualify for funds. The amount of funds that they get is based on the number of students that they have. And so the dollar amount will vary school by school. For our high school in Galena, it's important to note that next year, since it's their first year, they qualify for the personnel grant. So there's two pieces, the Concentration of Poverty, the Personnel Grant, which pays for the community schools facilitator. And a community schools facilitator in the first year does a needs assessment and engages the parents and the students and the community in what exactly are the wraparound services that that particular school community needs. And then they build a plan to bring those resources based on the community's needs assessment. So that's, next year, our high school in Galena will have their Personnel Grant, they'll hire a community schools facilitator who will engage in that work. The following year is when they will get the per-pupil allocation. So the other three schools have a community schools facilitator and they get student allocations. The high school and Galena won't get the student allocation until the following year.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So the question I have with the Personnel Grant is just because, you know, just in our conversations, and I just feel like our staff have a really good understanding of what the needs already are. And so to me, it feels like a bureaucratic hoope to jump through when we already understand what the needs are, when the money could just...
Right. I hear what you're saying. We don't have the authority to not do the needs assessment. That's part of the process that the state requires for us to do. So I hear what you're saying is that, you know, we have a sense of urgency around getting those resources. Community schools facilitators can do a lot in that first year, but they can do it with the funds that we have available for that year. They'll get more, again, when the per-pupil allocation comes in from the state, which would be in FY '27. There is no way for me to accelerate getting that per-pupil from the state. So I hope that kind of clarified some of that.
Yeah.
Question as well. You said Galena was the first school. What was the other school?
The high school.
The high school. Will the high school follow the same pattern of Personnel Grant first year, per-pupil the second year?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
And then the Transitional Supplemental Instruction. These are grant funds that, again, they come in the unrestricted budget, but they function as a restricted grant, meaning you can only use those funds for the specific purpose. These funds are actually fading or reducing year upon year, and they are dedicated to supporting early childhood grades. And Ms. Stewart will correct me, K to 3. Right. I always want to say K to 2, but it's K to 3. But just so that you know, that is dedicated to support that, and those funds have been and will continue to reduce year upon year under the blueprint legislation. So what you can see here, bottom line, is the total amount of dollars that we have to run our school system next year is $30.9 million. I just want to highlight that last year, our budget was 33, and we'll get into why it's less this year than in the previous year. So we know, and we've talked about this, and it's fairly typical at every school system across the state and I imagine across the nation, personnel are the lion's share of any school budget. What we see here in this proposed budget is that our personnel will cost us $25.5 million of the 30 million. So you can see how that breakdown is by salary, FICA, pension, and healthcare. We estimate in the budget-building process that a generic position is about $100,000. That would be inclusive of salary, FICA, pension, healthcare, right? Some personnel, because of their years of experience and their credentialing are more, some personnel because of the criteria for their job and salary is less. So just to give everybody a working concept here. For things that aren't our people, that's what we call non-personnel, right? We have budgeted 7.2 million. These are inclusive of materials of instruction. You can see the budget categories on the screen, materials of instruction, maintenance, you know, fixing the facility, transportation. It's all the other things besides our people. And so when you look at our total expenditure there, that comes up to be $32.7 million. So if you're, and visually, you can see how the lion's share of our budget is personnel. 78% of our expenditures are our personnel. So here's our fundamental challenge, friends. Our income is 30.9, but our expenses are 32.7. So how, you know, how do we deal with this deficit and fundamentally, why? Why do we have a deficit? Here's it in a nutshell. What you see on the left-hand side is our revenue. So our revenue, as is the case for every school system, is that our revenue is based on the number of our students, right? That's our core mission. So as our enrollment grows, our revenue grows. As our enrollment declines, our revenue declines. That drives the amount of state and local funding that we get. Over the last five years, we, as all school systems have, have benefited from the COVID emergency grant funds. And for us, we had a total, over many, many grants, a total of about $15.8 million in emergency funds. Now, those emergency funds were sent to school systems in a state of, you know, as the globe was in a crisis, to help stabilize, which they did. And so those funds are gone. They have sunset, and we have spent ours, and the last little bit that's being spent now in the Maryland Leads Grant is, I mean, we're down to, what, $7,000 of the 15 million. Expenditures, however, on the other side, continue to grow, right? It's just like in your own home budget. The cost of doing business does not go down. So we have, of course, required programs that we have to offer, which have a cost to them. So if you're, and visually you can see how the lion's share of our budget is personnel. Seventy-eight percent of our expenditures are our personnel. So here's our fundamental challenge, friends, our income is 30.9, but our expenses are 32.7. So how, you know, how do we deal with this deficit? And fundamentally, why? Why do we have a deficit? Here's it in a nutshell. What you see on the left-hand side is our revenue. So our revenue, as is the case for every school system, is that our revenue is based on the number of our students, right? That's our core mission, so as our enrollment grows, our revenue grows, as our enrollment declines, our revenue declines. That drives the amount of state and local funding that we get. Over the last five years, we, as all school systems have, have benefited from the COVID emergency grant funds. And for us, we had a total, over many, many grants, a total of about $15.8 million in emergency funds. Now, those emergency funds were sent to school systems in a state of, you know, as the globe was in a crisis, to help stabilize, which they did. And so those funds are gone, they have sunset, and we have spent errors, and the last little bit that's being spent now in the Maryland Leeds Grant is, I mean, we're down to, what, $7,000 of the 15 million. Expenditures, however, on the other side, continue to grow, right? It's just like in your own home budget, the cost of doing business does not go down. So we have, of course, required programs that we have to offer, which have a cost to them. Salaries for our personnel continue to go up, and the inflation of operations, right? We know, all of us, struggle with the electricity bill, I remember Mr. Rose talking to us about the cost of electricity this past winter with the cold winter. So we see the expenses are going up, but our revenue is going down, and what we were using to help sustain and provide stability as our enrollment was dropping, those funds are no longer available. So let's take a minute...
Question?
Yes.
So I'll make sure I'm understanding, the $32 million, so about the $3 million deficit that we face right now is strictly from declining student enrollment?
Fundamentally, that's the underlying foundation of their dilemma.
And two quick follow-up questions. One, how much is the allocation per pupil in Kent County?
It's $9,000 and some, do you remember, Ms. Stewart, $9,000?
What was it? Probably $9,222.
$9,222.
Foundation.
Yeah.
The other, the cost per person.
Yes, so just to clarify for everyone, so the foundation funding, so if you think of like a generic student, 9,000...
222.
222. It was in my preliminary budget presentation, the preliminary chart there. But remember, under blueprint, I'll use Mary McComas as the example, if I'm a generic student, that's what you get for me. However, I have service needs. I speak Spanish as my first language, I may need the service to help me as I'm developing language skills in English. I also may have a learning disability, so I receive special education funding. So for each of those services, the student allocation goes up, depending upon...
Those five pillars that you had on this, understood.
Depending upon your unique characteristics, a learner, is the idea here.
How many students have we lost to declining in the last five years since COVID, since we were kind of using emergency COVID money to sustain us? How many students have we lost during that time?
Right.
Because essentially, if we're losing students constantly for five years without that money, we would have been looking at a whole nother set of issues, would that be correct?
That is correct, so thank you, and that's a perfect segue. So what you see here in this slide is a chart of our student enrollment since 2015-16 school year, so for the last almost 10 years. If you look at just 2020 to our current, so just the last five years, we have lost 224 students in grades K to 12, but the funding for pre-K is a little different, but our foundation and funding is really at K-12. At a minimum, this would equate to $2 million over those five years. And we also, for every student that qualifies for free and reduced meals, we get supplemental funding for every student qualifies for free and reduced meals. And if we even took, if we took the percentage of students overall that typically qualify for that and applied it to that 224 students, that would have been an additional $1.1 million. So we're looking at a total of $3.19 million that we do not have in our budget as a function, and this is a conservative number here, please know, because I'm not calculating in the funds we were lost if they were a multilingual learner or a special education student. So this is a conservative impact that I'm pointing out here. Sorry, I got it all in my head. So knowing we are not, that we don't have those funds because those students aren't with us, we were able to get by, however, without reducing positions because we had the emergency funds to help keep us afloat. So without these emergency funds, as student enrollment would have gone down in a normal context, we would have had to reduce positions a little bit each year. But because of the emergency stabilization funds, we were able to not reduce. And while it is hard now, the truth is, we needed that support at that time, right? We know when students returned from the COVID pandemic, there was a lot of behavioral needs, it was important to have class sizes at a very reasonable size to make sure that we were supporting student needs and re-engaging students and normalizing attending schools. So by no means do I want to say that those emergency funds weren't necessary, they were, but that time has come to an end, you know, there is, for everything, there is a season, and that season has come and gone. And now, hence, you can see why this really is a budget about rightsizing our organization to our student enrollment.
Question before you move on about student enrollment, do we have any data to kind of let us know, because 224 students in five years, that's a lot, it's about 45, 44 students a year, do we have any data to let us know why we lost students?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to share that. So I have been digging into our data around when students leave us, and we do keep track of that data. And I will tell you that, on average, 71% of our students who leave us are leaving and moving out of the county, they're moving to other school systems in the state, or they're moving out of state, I suspect Delaware, but 71%, so seven out of every 10 students that leave us is not leaving us to go to a private school, they are, or even leaving us to go to homeschooling. There are students who do that, but their numbers are relatively small. But 71% are leaving to, their family is moving out of Kent County and relocating to another county or even out of state. So that's, and of the 71, 45% of that, those students are going, they're staying within the state of Maryland, and 24% is going out of the state. So that just gives you a sampling of when students are leaving us, where they're going, now why their families are relocating, that could be for a wide variety of reasons.
So it would be misinformation to think students are leaving public, Kent County Public Schools and going to, for lack of using another school system, private entities, Gunston or Christian Academy.
Right, I can't, I can't speak to that, I can just speak to the numbers, and the numbers indicate, right?
Understood.
Right, but I understand your point, and I would say, as I have been personally talking to parents as they withdraw this year, I will say, I ask them specifically, are you leaving because you are dissatisfied? Have you had a bad experience? And they're saying no, they're saying that I'm moving, I'm relocating, so...
So in the beginning of the pandemic, I think once you lose a kid, you're not going to get him back.
I would agree.
So, and in the beginning of the pandemic, private schools were offering in-person instruction and we were not.
Right.
And parents wanted in-person instruction because it's easier to learn that way.
Sure.
Second of all, hey, let's face it, school's free daycare, unless you're going to a private school. So, you know, they needed, that parents at some point had to go back to work. So, I mean, they're, like I said, once you lose a kid, we don't get him back.
I would agree, and that's been my experience in other jurisdictions as well, is when families make a decision, it's a big decision, and when they make that decision, they see it through. And I think it's important for us to, I know, Ms. McGee, you made a comment the other day to me about the data, like I go back to the data, right?
Yeah.
Because we think a lot of things, but the data tells you, the data tells you. And so this is the crux of our deficit problem here. Also, just for providing people the details, and we had gone over these details in January when we did a presentation on our grant funds, Ms. Stewart and her team did that presentation, there was a lot of grants that we talked about...
Yeah.
...at that time, but I wanted to lift up the emergency grants so that people could see this connection here. And you can sort of see all the different funding resources, and some indicate what they're designated for, and some had more, a broader scope of what you could use the resources for. But all of those funds are the things that have been allowing us to move forward without really cutting down our staffing.
I have a question about that. Aside from not being able to keep certain personnel that we've been able to with these grants, are there any programs that we're losing that you think are going to be detrimental, or are these all sort of just emergency programs recovering from COVID?
Well, these were largely emergency funds that helped support us with adding things. You know, I'm looking to not cut programs for students.
Okay.
That's what I'm striving to do, because it's one thing to adjust the level of service, it's another thing to take away direct programming.
Okay, thank you.
And one more question before we get too far from the decline student enrollment. Since we have data, is any data showing how many kids we would be losing like in the next five years? Or at least until the implementation of the blueprint, 2034?
Sure, sure, I appreciate, again, the opportunity. So all school systems receive from the Maryland Department of Planning, school projections, we are projected to continue to lose about another 40 students, let me just make sure I'm looking at that.
And that's not, that's based on birth rate and stuff, right? That's, is it?
No, this is based on, so projections, right? It's a forecast that the state is making, and we know how forecasts go, right? Like, it's a, it's an educated guess. According to the Maryland Department of Planning, we are estimated to lose about another 40 students over the next four years, and then to be...
Each year or a total?
A total, a total. So they are projecting that we'll lose nine more students for the FY '20, the next budget cycle, and then 10 the year after that, and then it will stabilize, sorry. It's 9, 10, 20, and then it will stabilize. And then we're projected to begin increasing in student enrollment in 2029. So, you know, we're still according to the state projections, but again, they are projections. So, but just to give you an idea, the brutal truth is, we will continue to decline for another few years, then plateau, and then begin to climb again. And again, these projections are developed by the Maryland Department of Planning, they are not developed by Kent County Public Schools, and they are based on a variety of factors. I know birth rate is certainly a significant one that's taken into account. So is good for me to move on?
Yes.
Okay, again, here you just see in detail the emergency funds that were helping us stabilize as we moved through and came out of the pandemic, and these funds are no longer available to support.
That's kind of jarring to think, I'm just thinking, almost $16 million is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, it is, and we are grateful to have had the support, but, you know, all things have a season. So how are we navigating this? So I want to share with the community what I have been doing to try to close or mitigate this deficit. First and foremost, Ms. Stewart and I relentlessly zero-based our budget, meaning we went back and we looked at what was the three-year actual spend for every category, and we trimmed and trimmed and trimmed, and reallocated where necessary. So for example, what we found year upon year is that we were going over budget in transportation. Well, some of that is because we know that the cost of transportation gas alone continues to change, right? Maintenance of vehicles. And so we reallocated to make sure that there's more money put in place, we had not been upping the allocation even though we knew the expense was going up. So in that zero-basing process, we, I, we have a saying in my family that my one aunt, Cecilia, turned a penny three times before she spent it. Well, Ms. Stewart will tell you, I turned it five times in this process to make sure that we were using it where it needed to be, and where I could trim, I did. So we reduced non-personnel expenses by slightly over a half a million dollars, you'll see the actual figure in a few slides. So that's the first thing I did, is I looked at what are the things and operations that we could pare back to make a dent in this deficit. We've identified ways to economize our operations, an easy example is, you know, we have athletic teams, the boys and girls, I'll use lacrosse as an example, if they're going to play a team outside of the county, which I guess they have to, right, because we're the only high school, instead, the boys gone one day and the girls gone another day, well, no, they need to play on the same day so they can ride the same bus, so we're only affording one transportation. Things like that as examples of how we're trying to economize, right? Where can we make the most of every penny? And we're working with, I want to thank Mr. Hudson, he was working with folks in the whole Bayside Conference around this concept, because we need our partners in the other counties to kind of help schedule things in that way. We've instituted a hiring freeze, and we have been, I want to thank our Teachers Association, we have introduced a retirement incentive to try to support those at the top end of our profession that are eligible for the incentive to consider that incentive.
I have a question about the hiring freeze.
Yep.
When did that get instituted?
It's really instituted now, just most recently.
Okay.
Part of things I was waiting for was to see what happened in the legislation, there was a moment in time, well, there was a long moment in time where we thought we weren't going to get money for collaborative planning, and just on the very last day of the legislative assembly, we got, we did get collaborative planning money worth $275,000. So that's all part of, like, a lot of these things are kind of happening very quickly and recently.
Okay.
Two questions, one, well, one comment, a question. Comment is, we were pretty lean, from my understanding, joining the board, we were a pretty lean financial stable school system prior to this year, correct?
Yes.
So it wasn't really a lot of money to go around. And then also, I don't know how much we can discuss this part, but the retirement incentive, is that to kind of help balance some of the gray area we might be seeing with the deficit of funding?
Well, what the retirement incentive does is it helps our highest-paid professionals maybe be able to retire, which they, you know, that they're, I don't know, Mr. Hudson, I'm not explaining this very well, but...
It will, you know, ultimately could help save costs and will also potentially help with attrition rates.
There you go.
If we have to go down the road of a reduction in force.
Right.
Which, you know, if we went that route, which that is a collectively bargained procedure that is outlined in full Kent County Teacher Association agreement, as well as our support staff association, you start with your folks who are conditionally certified, who are typically, you know, your newer, overpaid staff, which could then mean that that $100,000 FTP allocation that Dr. McComas is talking about might not reach that $100,000 FTP. So if we need to go that route, then there's a potential for more positions.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think I understand what you're saying. So three, two or three lesser-paid people could be saved if one person at the $100,000 benchmark retired, is that what you're saying?
More or less, exactly. Because our professionals who are eligible for retirement are our highest-paid professionals, because they have decades and decades of experience and credentials, right? They've worked hard to be at the highest part of the pay scale. If they leave, that's, their salary goes, and we're not paying that salary, and it helps us get to the number of positions that we need to reduce by to close our deficit.
And that explanation that Mr. Hudson just gave is force of reduction, not attrition, right?
Well...
That's because of attrition, so we don't have to go down the road of reduction.
Understood.
Yeah, if you'll give me a second, I'll talk about this, and I have a visual that I think will just help everybody think through this process, right? So first, I just want to take a moment because I think it's important, you know, there is nothing more valuable than our people, because people are our most versatile asset in any organization, right?
Agreed.
And so it's very important that everyone understand, the first thing I tried to do is reduce the things that are not people, and I took that very seriously. You can see here, and you can refer to these in the draft budget book that was published, this is where you can see some of the reductions. I'll give you an example, too, in category nine with transportation. If you look at the bottom line for transportation, you don't see a reduction, you have to actually look up in the line item details, and you'll see in the parentheses exactly where I trimmed. Again, transportation does have increasing costs, so even though I trimmed here and I trimmed there, we still did not trim the whole category overall. But you can see for yourself, line by line, exactly where I went in with the scalpel to trim and trim and trim and trim and trim again.
This information is made available to the public, correct?
It is, it is, and I just want to take a moment to thank everybody for your grace, because I had these published, really uploaded on Saturday, I was working right up until nine o'clock Friday night trying to figure out how to make this as feasible for our community as possible. So here, I just want to go over sort of the numbers at large, and then, Mr. Queen, I'll get to like how to... So here, I just want to go over sort of the numbers at large, and then, Mr. Queen, I'll get to like, how do we, how do we work through this? Again, if you see overview here, the thirty-nine point nine, that is our local funding. That is inclusive of the blueprint funding for this year, which the blueprint funding gave us an additional amount to last year. But because, despite the fact that we're getting more money through the legislation, because of our declining enrollment, it still washes itself out. Expenditures for personnel, as I said, that budget of twenty-five point five million is based on the idea that we will reduce thirty-six positions through a combination of attrition and a reduction in force if we have to. And I'll talk in more detail about that momentarily. Again, you see the seven point two in non-personnel, that's after reducing a half a million from non-personnel. I also just want to add for the point of understanding this holistically. Twenty-four months ago, as an organization, we reduced non-personnel by seven hundred thousand. So in the last twenty-four months, we have reduced non-personnel expenses by one point two million. Just for everyone to sort of see how this builds over time. And then exhausting our fund balance with the exception of our five hundred thousand, which is our policy floor to maintain. That still brings us in at a deficit of eight hundred and one thousand dollars. Or the equivalent, again, remember, we talk about, we think about this, and positions are roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Or the equivalent of eight additional positions. And so that is really what I'm proposing here. Let me, yes, go ahead.
So you said the five hundred thousand dollars, is that our like reserve that we try not to touch in case of an emergency?
That is our fund balance.
Actually, that's sort of legislated by, I mean, that's more than just our-
Brainy day fund.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's codified or something like that.
Right, well, I know it's in our policy, right. So it's in our policy. And, and, and truth be told, that's, I mean, it's something if, if we needed to use it, but, and I will say this. We are at the point in the year where school budgets are no longer spending. Anything that they have not yet spent, we pull all of that together and that will help off, that will add to our fund balance contribution, right? So I, we're still in the process of tabulating because the cutoff date is really technically, it's tomorrow, the fifteenth. Next year, I will move that up a month to March fifteenth, but April fifteenth has been our practice here. But that will, that will give us something. I just, right now, can't tell you how much that will give us towards the eight hundred thousand.
Let me, let me ask a question to make sure I'm following. So you're presenting this to us to vote on. Once you vote on it, you take this to the county commissioners. And when you go to the county commissioners, that deficit of eight oh one is what you're going to ask them to, I guess, eventually give the school system?
Right, on top of what is this, the funding, right?
The maintenance of effort.
Yes.
So this is above what?
This is above, yes. Now, remember, they're also funding many things in the county. So there's no guarantee that that's going to be feasible on that end, and I want to be forthright around that. We're, we're good partners with our county funding, you know, partners, and we want to maintain that good partnership. So if whatever, you know, it may be that I have to come back and cut an additional eight positions to close this, just to be fully forward.
But you, you feel confident that the eight hundred and one thousand is the figure? I mean, you're talking about turning over every penny three times or whatever. Okay. You don't see that getting better?
I, I don't. The, the only thing, the only last thing to offset, as I said, is we've cut spending at the schools now. And any unspent funds that we pull together, that goes into the present, yes.
I would think that's almost kind of spot on, or closer you can get, that eight hundred thousand question.
Yes.
Can you explain to the community, because a lot of people ask me what MOE means, exactly what the maintenance of effort is and how much it is annually from the county?
So maintenance of effort is the, the concept is, it is the floor of funding for a school system. I will, I do want to take this moment to sort of teach a little bit. Maintenance of effort has been the traditional language used around what is, you know, state and local provide school systems for funding. With the blueprint legislation, they have shifted to a model called local share. We are a school system that is in the local share model, and my understanding is I think we moved to it right away. And this is where I may need Ms. Stewart to help, because what was your second part of the question? You have a second part?
Well, no, it was explaining to the people watching in, in the crowd, what the learning share or maintenance of effort is? And how much is that annually?
Right, so-
It changes, doesn't it?
It does change based on student enrollment and based on legislation. So let me see if I can go back to my one chart here. If we look up there and see this combined thirty point nine million as our income, that is a combination of the state share and our local share put together. The breakdown within that, I'm not sure, Ms. Stewart, if you can, you know, she's, she has her spreadsheet magic that she can pull up like that.
So you have your budget book?
Oh, there we go, budget book. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Stewart. So page two of our budget book. Yeah, you can see right, for those who are in the viewing audience, what you'll see on page two is you'll see the middle section labeled state revenue. And you'll see the top section labeled county revenue. And then you can, you can see that proportion within that.
Maybe you're going to answer this during your presentation, and I don't want to kind of put you on a hot seat by asking this too far.
It's okay, I'm paid to be on the hot seat.
Since you say that. Let's assume, well, we're not going to assume anything, but what are you going to do that we have seen differently in the past from our superintendent, taking an annual budget to them and asking for the same thing? Because they have asked for that increase, and I'm, I'm not sure if they have gotten it. So what are you going to propose to kind of get them to give you the eight hundred thousand, first part of the question? Second part, if we do not get the eight hundred thousand, what are you proposing to your board as ways to supplement that?
Sure. So first, I would say, you know, we work in good faith with our partners, right? And so I think it's, it's not about what I'm going to do, sorry, went in the wrong direction. I don't think it's about what I'm going to do to try to, I think it's about understanding that we are part of a larger system in the county and that there are many needs our whole community has. We have our needs and we're bringing forward our needs, but we also recognize that we are also pursuing funds for a middle school, right? So I think we need to, as partners, take it as a whole. Any support that they're able to provide us above and beyond is, we're grateful for, right? The alternative, you know, as I mentioned, but I'll just-
And isn't the, I'm looking out in the audience, Mr. Price. The allocation to education is the largest part of your-
Yes.
Budget percentage-wise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and that is, and I will say, and I certainly want, don't want to put any of our guests on the spot.
No, I didn't, no, I just was saying, what, like you were saying, I mean-
We owe the lion's share anyway.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I mean, there's this perception out there of taking them off the hot seat for a minute. If we don't, if a school system doesn't get everything they ask for, some people say, well, that's, and they don't support education. I don't think you can-
I don't think that's the case.
Make that conclusion, but for some people, that's, that is a narrative they like to say, so I don't think we're approaching it that way.
I wonder if you could just speak to, because I know with the blueprint, right, I mean, things have, you know, they're, I don't know if that restricted versus unrestricted and how that factors into the flexibility that we would ideally like to have. And it would be nice to just have a better understanding, because I, you know, out of all the information that we perceive, which is so helpful, I really, it's still unclear to me.
Laura, could you speak into the microphone?
Sure, sorry. So it's, I would just like a better understanding, given the blueprint requirements and how funding is restricted and the flexibility ideally we would like to have that we don't have because of how the restrictions that come along with the blueprint.
Right.
And, and that's the information that I feel like is really missing for me.
Okay, I, I appreciate you clarifying so that I can, I can provide you that understanding. So I think one of the things that the blueprint requires, and in its original form, was requiring all school systems for July first to be in what they call the minimum school funding model. If you go back to the preliminary presentation I made, you will see I laid out what that seventy-five, we often refer to as seventy-five twenty-five model. And in, conceptually, in that model, across the state, seventy-five percent of funds should be at the school buildings, right? And only twenty-five percent, conceptually, should be running the central administration of the whole organization. That is a model that the blueprint set out a timeline for school systems to work towards. We have been working towards that. And again, if you go back to that preliminary presentation, you'll see examples of that. And what, and that's the example of, remember I said, Mary is a student who also receives services for special education and language acquisition. And so I would go to, you know, Sunshine Elementary, and I would bring the dollars that come with me as a nine thousand dollars, just being a student. The extra bump-up funding for special ed, the extra bump-up funding for language acquisition. And that was, seventy-five percent of that would be in the school budget. The Accountability and Implementation Board for Blueprint are referred to often as the AIB. They have issued a waiver to school systems that would afford school systems more time to get to that model. Now, we have been working towards that model. However, I feel like if, when given the opportunity to take more time on an assignment, take more time on the assignment. And so that, that model would give us less flexibility, I think, to answer your question. Because right now, I have the capacity, as, as all superintendents do, to say, hmm, you know what? You may be at a school that has a smaller enrollment, and you may be at a school that has a larger enrollment. And if I could just take some funds to support you, then I can do that, right? Whereas you've got enough student enrollment to like really handle, absorb things, right? Right now, I have that flexibility to be able to help those smaller schools. In the seventy-five twenty-five model, some of that becomes more challenging to do. Which is again, why I'm like, you know, the teacher in me is, if you're given more time on the assignment, take more time on the assignment, right? Yes, sir.
Okay, so basically, the way I see all this is that the state of Maryland is out of money. And I think that the blueprint, in my own opinion, if we're pushing our expenses off, we're going to have to make up that someday. We're going to have to make up those expenses. And I feel like the blueprint's going to implode in a couple of years. I don't think there's the money for it. We don't have the money, and I'm just saying that I'm all for the students, but I think the blueprint is just going to be a major problem.
I, I understand. I, I think you're not alone in that.
So with utilizing the waiver though, I mean, how, what would that look like for us? When, when you're thinking about just asking for more time, like how would that play out?
What, what that does is, once we get through this rightsizing, the budget this year, we would, I think, the waiver, as, as I read the initial introduction, and we have not filed it yet, but we will, there's actually quite a long window to file for it. The waiver would then allow us more time to work with our principals around managing the budget and, because their school budgets will look and, and function differently than they do now. You know, now, school principals largely get funds for materials of instruction, right? And they, you know, they get, you know, they, they really get things that kind of help with the day of the day. They don't need to, to look at their budgets and say, gee, how many teachers can I afford at my school, right? That's really something that we manage when they're behalf. So things like that would change, and I think the opportunity to support our principals and a deep understanding of that, support family members and understanding the seventy-five twenty-five model is important. Because part of it is increasing the level of transparency so that families can see what their school budget is, how that school budget is utilized. And so there really are layers of preparing everybody for a significantly different model of how funds are organized. And just to be clear, the seventy-five twenty-five percent model is how we're organizing the dollars. It doesn't impact if we have more dollars or fewer dollars, it's just kind of how it's organized and, and how those dollars can be spent.
So back on the seventy-five twenty-five percent being the administration, right? So I mean, there was a lightbulb moment for me about two months ago when you explained administration is not central office staff. Administration is administering a school system, right?
Correct, correct. It's all of that. And again, for anyone, I think, Ms. Stewart, where, where in the budget book could people sort of find those definitions or get a sense of everything that's inclusive? I guess it's really when you look down. So like, if you look at-
There was a whole bunch of like explanations practically in every line item.
Right, so for example, if you go to page six, you'll see category one, administration. And it says, administration category includes expenditures for the centralized management and supervision of the school system to include board of education expenses, executive administration, business support services, and other centralized support services. You know, so things like, I don't know, mailing out report cards, right?
Yeah, but I think there was just a, I mean, I know I, I had the misconception. I just assumed administration was you.
The people, right, right, the people. And that's a common misperception I've seen in all four school systems that I've worked in. Because we're conditioned administrator means the person, right? As opposed to the function of administration. Okay, so this is my proposal here. It includes a reduction of thirty-six positions equating to six point, three point six million dollars. The reduction of non-personnel worth a half a million. It includes requesting additional support on top of our allocation. And you asked a question, Mr. Queen, what happens if our funding partners aren't able to support that or maybe partially can support that? So then what happens is I come back and I have to balance that out by more reductions.
And let me ask, when you say partners, are we strictly saying county commissioners or are we talking private stakeholders and things of that nature as well?
Yeah, I'm really talking about our county funding, public funding sources. You know, any private funding is really donations. And the state, the opportunity to like, to lobby the state for additional funds closed with the legislative season.
Let me, one, and, because I want you to keep moving on, but this is, the budget you're giving is also predicated on the demands and legislation that the blueprint says we have to implement as well?
Yes.
So quick question. Let's just pretend it's going until twenty thirty-four. And every year, that increase that's happening that we can't even afford because we're already in a deficit, would it be safe to say? And this is really for community members, the burden of, if the county commissioners decided to raise tax, then that burden then falls on us, the citizens. As a board member who has constituents, and a lot of my constituents in our school system, almost eighty percent in poverty, how can we justify that? Like, it's, it's cool to say, yeah, we're batting down the hatches, we're going to try to do what we can do to make sure our school system is great. But in some cases, you're looking at a tig's hack that bury people in poverty here. How do we even approach that honestly?
Right, well, and I think that's why, you know, we need to be thoughtful around, it's not as simple as just raising taxes, right? Like, it's because there are deeper implications there, right? It's not, it's just not that simple. And because as you're pointing your, the number of people in poverty, right? So raising taxes just drives them deeper into poverty, right? And so I think it's, it's complex. So how can I justify, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Not you specifically.
I know, right? The blueprint, you mean?
Yes.
Well, I think you're, you're, you know, you're identifying the same point Mr. Rhodes raised, which is the blueprint is an expensive initiative. I do, you know, we saw this year, there were some preliminary efforts to make modifications to the legislation. We shall see. I'm not enough of a betting lady to bet one way or the other where legislation will go related to the blueprint. But it's certainly a, a challenge, you know, I've said in pla- other places, I'll, I'll continue to say because it's, it's what I know and believe as a leader. You know, leaders make ambitious plans, right? You don't plan, you, you plan ambitiously. And we all recognize as leaders, when you go from theory into implementation, theory into action, you hit changing conditions. You discover unforeseen consequences that you didn't realize would happen, right? When I personally think about the blueprint, that was formulated before the pandemic. And the entire global economy changed as a function of that crisis, right? So it was written in one time, the conditions are definitely different today, and I know- And I know the superintendents put forward recommendations to the legislature related to the blueprint. And will continue to advocate as the top leaders in education to help address the implementation challenges of blueprint. So, I, I just offer that, I always caution us to not necessarily abandon the aspirations of what we want to do for students, right? But we have to come to the table around, what's the functional implementation? And that's where the rub is. Yes, sir?
So, the way I look at it again is that all these people voted to do this blueprint totally unfunded. There was no money. So, they figured like, five years down the road, we're gonna have to figure it out. And we're trying to figure that out right now.
Yeah.
I think it was a major mistake in our government. And I don't think our governor or the administration working now has a clue of how they're gonna pay for it.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Mr. Hushen. So, is there a, I'm thinking about, we don't have the biggest window to pass a budget, to go to the commissioners. When is a, a deadline to see if somebody will take the early retirement, or somebody-
That is a great question. So, part of the negotiated MOU that we struck last Tuesday, we-
Negotiated MOU with the bargaining unit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We gave them until the currently scheduled May 12 school board.
Won't we have struck our budget before then?
Well, we, I was gonna ask if we could move our budget approval up by one week. However, we can still be working through that. Because, you know, you're, at that point, you're talking a matter of days. So, I think it, it, we can still work through that. If, if anything changes after that, it's to our benefit.
Well, and maybe by that point, most people have made their decision, don't you think? I mean, that's holding out kind of late.
So, I am meeting with every potentially eligible employee. I started last Wednesday, and I will be going until Tuesday after the break, where I would have had a personal sit-down with every single eligible person. So, I think by then, I'll have a better idea. But the deadline-
Right, okay.
The deadline for that is May 12. Remind me when the deadline for presentation to the county commissioners?
Yeah, when are you planning on?
Well, I am hopeful to, and I just want to acknowledge, Ms. Dorsey's been waiting to ask questions. I am hopeful to move our, going to our funding partners up to May 6 is what I'm hopeful. Because, again, as good partners, we recognize we are the most significant share of county funds. And we're kind of like the big rock, if you will. And so, I wanna make sure that we're courteous and, and can kind of present so that they have time to do their deliberations appropriately. Can I, Ms. Dorsey's been very patient, you mind? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The question I'd like to ask, which is like a foundational piece to all of this, because-
I'm sorry, Rita?
Um, the question that I would like to ask, which is like a foundational piece to all that we're talking about as far as budget and what we will have, or, or what we hope to have, et cetera, is, I, I would like, the foundational piece is, I would like to know how this is going to affect our students. Because that's the most important thing, not only for us, in which we are concerned about that, but also for the commissioners to consider when we're considering what we're going to give, you know? And I, I know that there's a lot of money that's needed in Kent County. And everybody kind of has their hand in the pot. But our children are so important, and if we invest in them now, and I'm not saying that the commissioners doesn't, that they do not want to invest in our children. I'm, I'm not even putting it on the commissioners, period. I'm just saying, in general, however we can come up with, you know, the funds or possibly keep, you know, more teachers than what we have to let go, it, it, it's essential that we consider the children. Because the bottom line is, is that they're going to be the ones that suffer.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsey. Mr. Queen, go ahead.
To build on her point a little bit, in the past, a lot of people went to the county commissioners' truck, kind of leaving this, the funding requests at their feet. I think this is a little, it's an anomaly this year. I don't really think it's on the county commissioners, myself personally. I think the burdens that we're taking on now is kind of from federal and state. 'Cause I think the county's budget might be like sixty-five million. We're already garnering about thirty to thirty-three million of that.
Right. I think that's, that's, again, why it's important. I think we think about this as a whole, right? And it's, it's not, it, it's a community challenge here, right? And so, I appreciate you saying that, because it's, it's larger. I, I think, I always caution against, I wanna make sure people don't think that this is an us them, because it isn't. We're one community, one community. And our children are part of that one community. And, and we are respectful and grateful for the fact that we do routinely have the lion's share of the community funds and resources. As is the case in, in every county that I've, I've been in. So, it's not just in here in Kent County. I think our collective problem continues to be economy of scale. I had to take time at the legislature in my testimony at one point. One of the elected officials was saying, well, your middle school, it's so expensive per pupil. Yes, because we don't have the economy of scale, right? If you're doing for a smaller group, it's going to be more costly than when you have more people to distribute that cost against. It's a basic math proportional reasoning situation. And so, you know, our economy of scale is our fundamental challenge in every regard, and not just with our school system, I think.
So, I, I just wanted to say, I didn't, maybe I kind of like, wasn't clear, but my main question was, how will this affect our students?
Oh, yes. So, I'm going to get to that, and I'll, I'll just move on. I'll take that as the opportunity, keep moving here. So, I just put up here, you know, that, you know, 'cause it breaks all of our hearts to reduce positions. It's not joyful in any way for anyone. So, why do we have to really do that? And visually, again, just to share the information I shared in a pie graph earlier, and I shared in numerical format. You can see the proportion of our expenditures really is our people. So, there's no way for us to close this without touching the number of positions that we have. So, how will we do this? We talked about, it's sort of a multi-dimensional approach here. We like to think it's step one, step two, step three, but it really is several things happening simultaneously. First and foremost, again, we tried to, oh, we did come to agreement with their bargaining unit, and we've offered a retirement incentive for our, those who are eligible. We normally, every year, have a certain amount of attrition. People do retire routinely. People get married and they move, or they decide maybe teaching isn't the right fit for their profession. And so, there's a normal amount of loss every year. And typically, in good years, then we've replaced them. In this year, we will not be replacing those positions. And then, if you're not able to address the reductions that you need, you have to go to a reduction in force process. Our process is codified in our teacher's contract and our master agreements. Is it, I, I know our teacher's contract, it's codified.
It's also in our support staff.
And the support staff agreements as well. So, there is already laid out procedures that we will follow in that process. But of course, the goal is to get as close to that number as possible through retirement and the normal attrition. But I don't think we'll hit it-
Can I just ask a question, sort of philosophically?
Yep.
So, you keep using the, the phrase, "rightsizing." So, and, and you're, I'm thinking that we're all thinking beyond just the immediate, the, the urgency of what we have to do. That the hope is that this will put us on a, a stronger foundation, that, that we don't go through this every single year?
That is the, that is the hope. But as I also pointed out-
You gotta put out the first fire.
Right, 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 right. Well, let's put out the bonfire first, and then worry about the smaller ones.
Yeah.
You're right, that is the idea. I mean, because the more and more I looked at our data and studied everything, the, it became evident to me that we've not had to reduce positions because we have the emergency funds.
Fifteen million dollars of-
Support.
Exactly, yeah.
And that support is coming on. So, this, it really is sort of a function of rightsizing to what would have, in a normal context, been addressed little by little, year by year. Can I promise you, we won't need-
No, I didn't mean that, but I meant, the aim is that, so that, you know, it's probably not a good analogy. We're pulling off the Band-Aid now.
Exactly. That is, I think that's exactly kind of where it is.
Okay.
There's, we're really doing things that, if we didn't have those emergency funds, we would have been doing little by little over the last five years.
And emergency funds just prolonged, prolonged it. Truthfully, we have to do what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly. And it is, it is fundamentally the cliff from the, the emergency funds paired with declining-
And, I mean, not to make it any easier, but at least on the eastern shore, all school districts are going through this.
It is true, it is true. If you were to follow this, the stories of what's unfolding budget-wise in our other-
In the mid-shore, I mean, we're, yeah.
Yeah. And even, dare I say, western shore, you know, I mean, I, I know the system I was coming from began to address the cliff. And, you know, their scale is much larger. So, for us, it's, you know, thirty-six positions, potentially as high as forty-three. There, I know, they, it was two hundred and fifty positions, right? If you look at what Howard County is doing this year, you know. So, you can see, this is a system problem across the state. I think some of our board members this evening expressed causes of that system. You know, there's many forces here. So, this, Ms. Dorsey, gets to your question, how will it impact students? So, there's no, the way that we can reduce positions without it impacting our students. The, the question is, how do we mitigate the impact on our students? So, currently, I think it's important to know, again, as I've dug in and really studied the details of everything, currently, forty-three percent of our secondary classes have fifteen or fewer students. That's, that's been a gift and a luxury that we- Forty-three percent of our secondary classes have fifteen or fewer students. And I know, I'm in those classrooms, I walk in, I see. And while that is, in many ways, beautiful for our children and our teachers, it is no longer financially sustainable. And we've been able to provide class sizes at the secondary level. Not in all instances, again, forty-three percent, but that's almost one out of every two classes, right? And it will vary, of course, at the high school where you have electives and particular programs of study. But that's been a gift. And thank God, we had the gift, right? Because we know, coming out of the pandemic, there was a lot of things that were hard. That class size, size really was helpful in reining things in. So, what will it do? If, in reducing thirty-six positions, that will take these class sizes, on average now, there's always nuances to scheduling, but on average, that takes that class size up to around twenty-two. Now, I will tell you, research tells you optimal class size is fifteen to twenty-two, right? Once you start passing twenty-two, things start to get more and more challenging, particularly depending upon student needs, right? Remember, you've got Mary in the room, and I don't speak English, and I have a learning challenge, right? So, I may need a little extra help, and that's where that class size can be beneficial. We also know that research, time and time again, there's a lot of extensive research. One of the most famous ones is the RAND study. The most important thing, more so than class size, is the quality of instruction that is happening in that classroom, right? It really, the talent of our teachers is unparalleled to anything else when it comes to instruction. Followed, number two, by the instructional influence of a principal, right? So, teacher quality of instruction is the most impactful thing to achievement, even more so than class size, followed second by the instructional capacity of the principal. And certainly, we all know, a smaller group of students is easier to behaviorally manage. But I will tell you, having worked in four school systems, being, I have been in small classes where instruction was lousy. I've been in large classes where instruction was lousy. I've been in small classes where instruction was amazing, and large classes where instruction is amazing, right? So, there's a lot that goes into it. I know it's, class size is an easy go-to for everyone, and we all would like to be able to keep classes of fifteen, but we cannot financially sustain that.
Would the aim be, I mean, again, we don't, we're not privy to the, what your reduction in force protocol is, but would the aim be to try to keep the youngest classes, like elementary school?
Yes.
To keep them, to have the, you can only do one or the other, would be the emphasis on keeping smaller class sizes for elementary school?
Yeah, so certainly, we know, the younger a child, the more important, you know, if you've ever had a child or hosted a birthday party, right? You know, the younger they are, the more that group size impacts a lot, right? You know, when you're working with a seventeen-year-old, that's a lot different than a five-year-old or a seven, six-year-old. My aspiration is to try to protect our elementary positions as much as possible, right? Especially when we look at that data in grade three, right? We know what we're doing is working, right? And so, we, we need to, like, really try to protect that to the greatest extent possible. Now, if you have a, you know, a teacher retire, we're gonna be looking at, you know, how, how to support things, right? Because, right now, what I want everybody to keep in mind is, I don't have names attached, right? It's not like I can say, Joe, Sally, you know, Amar, they're, they're the ones who are going. These are conceptual positions at this point, right? Because we're trying to work through this as, as well as possible for everyone involved. But yes, and my aspiration is to try to impact the early grades, the young, the elementary schools less than the secondaries. I will tell you, this class size percentage here is in grade six to twelve. It's not our elementary schools. If you go into our elementary schools, and thank goodness, right, this is part of our enrollment, hopefully growing, our elementary schools are full, classrooms are full. I know, I was just at Galena, last couple, you know, I feel like, well, I'm there at least once a week, one average. And I was in a kindergarten classroom, that's a really full classroom. And that gives me hope, right? Because, as you said, we need to keep those students to help our enrollment grow.
I have a question. Focusing on the younger elementary age students, great. But you also said this forty-three percent kind of affects six through twelve.
Yes.
So, some, Ms. Dorsey's point, when you look at the data, yes, third grade is doing great, but also, the tenth graders are kind of staying at a high level of achievement. How hard, how much could somebody in that group get affected by this? If you go from fifteen to twenty-two, and then also, while you're answering that, is twenty-two already a fixed and locked number? Or will this number fluctuate depending on the needs?
It will, the, the, the number is not fixed, twenty-two is not fixed. That is when you do the rough statistical analysis of, you take out, you know, thirty-six positions. So, and that will vary, right? So, it may be that your English class is at twenty-seven, but your social studies world history class with Ms. McComas is maybe thirty-one, okay? So, and it may be, I don't know, maybe your algebra class is at twenty-two. So, it, it, that's why I'm saying there's nuances to this. So, I can't just say, you know, it's not so simple as to say each class will have this many.
Projected on what if.
Right, right.
One quick question about students. This is our class size, will it affect like the special education students?
Well, special education students are in every classroom, right? The majority of students who receive special education services are in your general education classroom. It's really only a small percentage with more severe disabling conditions that are not in your normal classroom. I just, and if you'll give me just a moment, I always, I always take the opportunity to help people understand that the large majority of students who receive special education services may be somebody with dyslexia, right? They, they're, they just need extra supports around reading, extended time, guided notes. So, a lot of the, the things that students need services for are not so extraordinary that they need to be elsewhere. Students who do need to be, have more intense services, we may need to have them in a separate setting. So, they will, they will feel that. Special education is an area, remember we said, our priorities, right? Students who receive services are a priority, right? So, the goal is to minimize any impact on special education. But yes, they may be in a class that they're used to fifteen, all right? And now, that class may have twenty-two or twenty-five.
I understand.
Um, I did have a question, just as far as like, policies and things. 'Cause I've heard of LEAs developing a policy that the, the class size would be no more than a certain amount. And so, I just wasn't sure, just because, you know, thirty is obviously different than twenty-two. And I just wasn't sure, you know, as a, maybe, maybe this is for the whole board then, to consider, do we set a, do we consider setting a cap on that?
We have recommendations around twenty-six. The challenge is, if we set a hard and fast rule, what happens if we don't have the, the money to do it? what happens if we don't have the, the money to do it, right? And so, and I will also say, we have instances where maybe your class is, you know, maybe we say twenty six is our number, right? That's our cutoff. You know, in November, you get two new students who enroll, right? And so now you're at twenty eight. What are you gonna do? You're not gonna hire a whole teacher, right, because of two. So I just use that as an operational example. You know, we, we strive to be twenty six, I think, in, in the, in the upper grades. And I'm not sure who can cite the policy on the younger grades. So we have a, a number that we strive to meet. But this, this is, I mean, this is a pretty, I think, atypical budget in that we're really going to have, we're really reconciling what we weren't adjusting over the last couple of years. So this is a great illustration of how you can have that number that we work to, to be within, like, that's best practice. But if we don't have the funding to support that, we, we, you know how you kinda have to do what you, you do the best with what you have, is what I'm offering. So I'm, you know, I'm not trying to tell the board what to do with that, but I will just say, in all reality, that, that, a classroom enrollment can fluctuate over the course of the year through people enrolling and people unenrolling. And so it's, it's really needs to be, like, again, a best practice target. And I think, you know, we've had, we, I mean, and not that I don't love class sizes of fifteen, but I, I ran the numbers, you know, Cecil County, for example, their, their classes are thirty, you know? So we, we ran the numbers in several jurisdictions. So even some increase is still going to not be out of what is typical.
That sort of underscores how important it is to have really good teachers.
Yes. Ms. Dorsey, you look like you were about, I wanna make sure you don't get.
I'm just trying to understand the clarity, because I know when we said that the forty three percent of secretary, secondary classes was fifteen and few, or fewer. And then we were talking about, you know, just having the fifteen or whatever, and I was kinda puzzled because I thought that, you know, it was a lot more children in, per class. And you said they would increase by seven. So right now, in some classes, like in high school or middle school, they may have already twenty five students.
Yes.
So to increase it by seven would be like thirty two students.
Right. It will vary depending upon the grade level and the subject area. So it's not, again, it's not a straight across the board, everyone will go up to twenty two or come down to twenty two. It really, especially at the high school, for example, it's your customized schedule, you know? Like, I'm, you may be in the certified nursing assistant program, I may be in the welding program, right? And so it may be that you and I end up taking English at the same time, and maybe that class is larger because more students, the way their other classes fold out, that English class may be thirty. A next class, the next period, you know, you might be in math, and that might be twenty.
Okay. So then, will they increase? And I know that you really cannot afford to increase, you know, like, assistance or anything like. I'm sorry. I know that you really cannot afford to increase the, you know, someone who can come and assist with the class, because if you have thirty, thirty two students, I believe that, you know, the teacher may need a little help.
Well, especially if they're younger children, right?
Yes, even, even the middle school. I mean, you know, because there's a lot going on a lot of times. And learning, it's hard, and it's hard for the teachers to teach in the midst of, you know, a whole lot of fooling around. Myself, I know that discipline is a big thing for me, and then discipline, as far as when it comes to the kids, having the same measure of discipline for each student, the same, not different, you know, or some, and then not.
Be consistent.
Bullying is a big thing. So these are foundational pieces that will help if the class sizes have, have to increase. Then if we address bullying or address, you know, the different issues that we have when it comes to disciplining the students and making sure to stick with it or, or our standards and rules, enforcing them regularly and constantly, because children believe in, when, when it's constant, they listen more. If it's, well, at least that's the way it is for me, you know? If I'm constant with it, I can't be, one minute is okay and the next minute it's not. They, they, but if we, as the adults, you know, make it so it's, it's the rule.
It's consistent.
It's consistent, and they will pay attention. But what I'm saying is, all that will help, because we can't go in the middle and make the class size bigger, but not really, you know what I mean?
I do. I do. And, and.
Mr. Hudson.
Just to add in on to, talking, we talked about fifteen, but we also had twenty percent of the class that's secondary level that had ten or less.
Oh, goodness.
So that's part of that fifteen. So it's not just fifteen.
It's even less.
Right. This is the average. Right. This is the average. But I, Ms. Dorsey, I just wanna come back and say, I do hear you around, regardless of how this unfolds, right? What's important is that we maintain consistent, high expectations that are consistently enforced behaviorally and academically, right? And, and yes, more adults, more supervision is always beneficial, right? And so I do hear you're saying, you know, we need to be mindful of how to provide additional support if and when we have those resources to do it. And I agree. I, I will say this, I have confidence in our teachers, right? I am in our classrooms. I will tell you, our middle school, I wa, and we just had our presentation, I think it was last month, the weeks are rolling together for me. I will, I walk in that side door of the middle school, you can ask our principals. I show up at any time, don't I, Ms. Hempstead? Or you don't, you never know when I'm coming, and I don't do that because I'm trying to get somebody. I do that because I want it to be normalized, that I am there, I go and I see the work for myself with my own eyes so that I can make informed decisions in real time. I walk in that middle school on any given day, it is quiet. Like, I have actually said to, to people, are there kids here? Because it's so quiet. And having been a principal of two middle schools in two different jurisdictions, it's rare to have a quiet middle school building. But it speaks to, you know, our student population and small class size. And, and I offer that as confidence that our middle school is, is well ordered. It is well ordered. That's not to say we don't have our days and we don't have our moments, because puberty is hard on everyone, and it's unpredictable, right? But I, I offer that to say, I believe we can still continue to make progress despite having to make these reductions. I absolutely do believe that.
Yeah. I'm not saying that we can't. I'm just putting it on the table as something that, you know, we want to make sure of, keep our eyes open for, and we do as is needed, you know? That's all I'm saying, because I know in the past, sometimes we haven't been, things haven't been addressed.
Yes, ma'am.
The way it should be. And because of that, things get out of control. And plus, when the kids came back from the pandemic, it was not easy.
No. Agreed.
You know, they had to get back into going into the school and doing things. So it wasn't anything, it wasn't just here. Whatever was going on, it was going on all over the place. So.
Absolutely.
You know, but I can tell you now, I feel like we've come a long ways, and a lot of things are better. But with the increases, you never know what's to come. So that's why I say it. So please, don't anyone take me wrong and think I'm trying to chop down the school. I feel like that it's, you know, we do a good job, but I just don't want it to get out of hand, and I don't want the kids to pay the price.
Agreed. Thank you. I, I agree with you. If I may, I think we're just about done. So what improvements can we make for next year, right? So one thing I wanna say is we're reorganizing, and this is not requiring any additional money. It's really redirecting special education funds that we have to help with special ed facilitation, you know, along with the quality of instruction that happens for students with learning support needs. There is an entire workload of federal compliance and organizing IEP meetings, making sure parents have due, due process and fair notice of, of everything, and collecting the data and the information. So there's, that's like, special education carries often really have two jobs that people don't realize. It's like, almost like two full different jobs. We are aggressively pursuing any and every instructional grant that comes our way. The state, under Dr. Wright, you know, is a tour of the force around literacy improvement. And she has gotten, boy, that probably wasn't proper English, she has gone out and recruited philanthropic donors to help with literacy grants for school systems. And we have applied for that literacy grant. We are hopeful that, I, I feel confident that we will get it. If we get that, it will afford us some grant money to have instructional coaches, to help to make sure that the quality of instruction is high related to literacy. That could be an opportunity, as that grant funds some literacy coaches. That could be an opportunity for some of the people in our current, who currently are employees, could apply for that, right? And so then, the cost of that position would shift to a grant while the life of the grant is with us. Increased efficiency systems. I gave the simple, you know, relatable example around busing, right? Like, athletics, like, let's combine the runs so that we're making one run instead of two, as just a one example. Some data systems, because right now, many of our data reports are manually, even just today, I was sitting there myself calculating up the withdrawals and where withdrawals have been going to over the last three years to do the data report myself. And just on that, I just wanna share with people, the Accountability and Implementation Board alone has a hundred and seventy four accountability reports that school systems are required to submit every year. And the state of Maryland has its own slew of accountability reports. We are tracking that data. So I can tell you, you know, we have already submit well over one hundred reports. And I think we calculate, right now, it's about four hundred and eighty five hours of central administration that's gone into completing these required reports. You talk about the flexibility and that, like, that's hours of real work that someone has to do to be in compliance with the state requirements. So we're looking at how to create more efficiency around data systems.
I mean, isn't that what you?
Yes, the power's.
You talked about, yeah, yeah, a problem, gosh, when, practically when you first got here, you couldn't believe that every, somebody had to, like.
Tabulate manually.
Yeah, and that's why, and it just slows everything down. You don't, if everything, not everything, but so many things are data driven, and you don't have, readily have that data available, it just slows everything down.
Right, right. And then we do have the increased concentration of poverty funds. So these are some of the improvements, if you will. I know that seems kinda flat after going through the, the brutal conversation. But these are some of the things that we will still be able to move forward with for next year. So what's our walk away here? Our walk away is we are rightsizing our budget to our student enrollment. And we are doing this now because our COVID stabilization emergency funds have been exhausted. And so please, it's important that everyone understand that this day was coming sooner or later, and it has arrived. And none of us are happy about it. And we continue to see an increased cost of doing business, right? As is the case for every enterprise in every sector. So this is, this is why we are where we are. I know it is difficult. Believe you me, it's not the joyful budget I would like to bring forward to everyone. But it is the truth. It is where we are, and we will make the most of what resources we have. Here's what I, I say to everyone, because I know it to be true, no matter what, the first day of school, students will show up, and the teachers and faculty and staff that we have in place will do everything we can to serve them to our best ability. And so that, I assure you, it won't be easy between now and then, but there you have it. Two, I do wanna share with everyone, because I think I've talked you out to death, I see the energy is, is subsided. How will the community, how has the community been involved? How will the community be involved? So as all of you know, I hosted a series of community conversations from July through, I think, November. And part of that was getting input and people's aspirations around the budget thoughts, questions. We have been actively discussing our budget since February. If you go back and look at the very first preliminary budget presentation, I laid out right then and there that we were facing a three million dollar deficit. And they were preliminary figures at that point. Will we, you know, at some point, once our board approves, I will go forward to present to our county funding partners. In the meantime, I will be going around to every school in our system and meeting, hosting a faculty meeting in person to answer questions as directly as I can for everyone's sake, because I have profound respect for our personnel. This is not an easy budget, and so it's important that I'm personally accountable to answer questions and try to support people. And I will also be hosting, we identify as a virtual meeting so that people don't necessarily have to drive. But I think, Mr. DeVito, didn't we also talk about it could, like, I could be in person, then we could be fielding? So I wanna make sure that the community knows that you can come and talk to me directly about the budget. You can ask me those tough questions. I will give you the best answer that I can throughout this process. So by no means am I done talking about this, because I, I recognize it's, it's very impactful. If we were to reduce all of the positions, it would equate to eleven point seven percent of our workforce. So it is significant and somewhat seismic for our organization. But it is rightsizing to our student enrollment, as hard as that is. So.
Quick question before your curtain call. The things that I've seen today, is this gonna hinder, I would say, was your strategic plan, a theory of action? Yes, ma'am.
Well, what I would say is that it, it kinda slow walks a little bit of our theory of action, because here's, here's what I was planning on anyway. Is, you know, when we really look at what distinguishes us from any other school system, right? What, what, why should people choose Kent County Public Schools? Not because we're the default, but because we are leaders in, in service to children and the community. You know, there's two theories of action that we really identified. First and foremost is how critical a high-quality middle grades experience is for students, right? We're feeling good, and feeling, I'm feeling good because I know the data, and the data is good around what is happening in our elementary schools, right? So our elementary schools are solid, right? It's really strengthening those middle grades, right? Getting, and, and, and I will tell you, I have been a school administrator. I started at the high school, served at middle schools, worked at elementary schools as an administrator. And I will tell you, those middle grades are probably, I, I, yeah, I can't say more important, but every bit as important as what happens in those elementary grades, because it's where we, we really have that last opportunity to close those gaps. And for kids who are ready to run, to get them moving, right? And what happens collectively as a nation is we go soft in the middle, right? It's like we have no core strength, right? We're strong here, we're strong in the legs, belly strength? No, right? So we've got to really strengthen the academics and wraparound supports around the middle grades so that they hit high school, knock those requirements out in ninth and tenth, and those eleventh and twelfth grade years can be in the work environment, doing internships, dual enrollment, all those experiences where they really need to be around adults so that they learn how to act like adults, they can see what relevant work environments are. So, but we can't get them there in, at the end of tenth grade if we're not rock solid in the middle, right? So how do we continue to move forward despite really an austerity situation here? Well, there is internal work that we need to do, right? And that's not necessarily going to require additional monies. One is that quality of classroom instruction. I will say, I'm grateful for the state literacy grant. I'm assuming we will get it. To get in there and do some instructional coaching, we're looking very closely at our math instruction. And so that's internal work that we need to do and would be doing ourselves regardless of how many teachers we have or not. Is it helpful to have more people? Yes, it is. But it's work that we need to do regardless of how large or not. We are pursuing free resources. So we have supported the Boys and Girls Club. They were pursuing a grant. I'm waiting to hear if they made it through the final round, round of their grant, if they get. If they get that grant, the Boys and Girls Club will provide youth development programming free of charge to every middle school student after school, throughout the entire school year, and they will stay late so that parents, you know, kids can stay and.
Is transportation included in that?
They are looking at providing transportation. And that partnership, we're also looking at the local management board, you know, currently the local management board helps fund our after-school programming with Minor A's Dream Alliance. Minor A's Dream Alliance would come under the Boys and Girls Grant and under the umbrella of the Boys and Girls Grant, and that may free up some resources to support with transportation. And Boys and Girls Club is willing to do extended hours, so parents who work and have to come pick up their child, they're willing to stay later, so parents who work can get there. So I'm really, if you pray, please offer up your prayers that we get that middle school partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. All of that would be free to us as an organization and free to every middle school child. So that is a huge potential for next year that just adds value and doesn't impact our budget. The other thing with STEM, we need to really, we are doing many things with STEM and STEAM across the organization. It's really about pulling together and connecting those dots so that our students and our parents can understand, you know, you know by the time your child's in seventh grade if they're kind of inclined to be engineers, or if they're inclined to be artists, or, you know, humanities types, or, you know, hands-on mechanics, and making sure that parents understand the options and pathways that are already in place. So we need to do a lot of that work internally regardless of, of funding. It's really about connecting what we already have in place and lifting that up in year one of the strategic plan.
Real quick for the Boys and Girls Grant, what's the date aligned with? Would they want to guess or?
Yeah, last time I checked in with the executive director, they said that they would know around the middle of April. So I was figuring if I didn't hear back from Mr. DeWitt, Derek DeWitt, by spring break, that's one of my first phone calls on the other side of spring break. I don't want to keep pestering the gentleman.
Is this something that's unique to Kent County, or is this something that they have exemplified during multiple places?
Yeah, so I think both. So they are currently very built out in their programming in Cecil County, and they tried to sort of stand up some services here at the recreational center in Wharton. Their challenge was transportation, right? Middle school kids getting to the rec center. So they approached me to see if they, if we would be open to a partnership where they were in our middle school. And of course, that kind of conveniently aligned with our vision of really having, you know, a flagship middle school, because we only have one, so, you know, we can go all in. So I, I think it's a combination. I'm excited that it's free to every middle school student. And Boys and Girls Club, you know, their programming is well-established over a century of programming that's well-established, evidence-based, and the variety of what they offer students is tremendous because they're so well-established. And of course, what they offer will be based on student interest and, and need. And there's my public announcement for Boys and Girls Club.
So can I ask you a couple of questions about, basically what I'm asking you is, so where do we go from here and what do you, specifically, what do you need from the board?
Yeah, thank you. So here's what I'm going to ask. Where we go from here is we are already scheduled for a public hearing on April 28th. I think it's important that we hear from our community and that people have the opportunity. You can also today, Mr. DeVio, we said, did we put up the email for people? Thank you, Mr. Poor. So we work to make sure that this presentation is an easy, accessible place on our website, and there is an email so that people who have questions can submit their email question. They can do that at any point. They can come to our public hearing so that we can be responsive. As I said, I will be going around and speaking directly to our faculty and staff members. So I will be doing all of that legwork. We'll have our hearing together. And then what I'd like to ask tonight is if we, if you would be willing for me to then come back on May 5th to finalize our budget, you know, maybe the, in the hearing.
You want us to vote that night?
The 5th, yes.
I've got, I've got a question just as a board member, so, you know, I, I read every single line in this thing and I.
Good jobs.
Thank you.
For doing your homework.
Yeah, so, I mean, I've got my own questions, but I'm not going to, it's 8:41 now and we're, so when does the board?
Deliver it, yeah.
When can I ask you a specific question?
You can email me, you can.
Well, it might be a question that somebody might want, somebody else might want to know the answer to too.
Yeah, yeah, and then.
I mean, there, there's a reason we have this, right?
Yes, yes, yes. And certainly, you know, May 5th is a week earlier, I think, than I was originally planning. But that's, you know, at the will of the board if, if we approve that on the 5th or not. I would ask that we do.
So if we approved it on the 5th, would your plan be to go to the commissioners the next day?
That's what I'm hoping so that we, as a courtesy, to try to go earlier than later.
Question.
Yes.
Is it a possibility to combine the April 28th meeting and instead of being on the 5th, we vote, we hear what the community have to say on the 28th, then vote on the 28th as well?
Well, here's, yeah.
I'd rather have more time.
I was going to say, I don't think I would have time to, to just sort of synthesize whatever we hear that night.
Right. I think it's important that our hearing is authentic and that we are listening, you know, it's about listening. It's about listening and taking in and going back and figuring out what can we do, right? What else can we do? Maybe in the hearing, somebody offers something that we've not yet considered, right? And I would not want to artificially have a hearing and be like, okay, I say what you're going to say and I made my, my own note anyway.
Yeah, understood.
So I, I think it's important that we authentically listen. It's, it may be things that we just haven't thought of, or, or it may be, in the end, you know, sometimes the, the brutal truth is the brutal truth, right? But I think it's important that we take it in and we deliberate, and then we come back on the 5th, answer any lingering questions.
So, at the public hearing on April 28th, would that be an opportunity for board members to ask questions to you as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. It's a, it's a, I know it's a lot.
No, no, and I don't mean this sarcastically, I'm just saying, there's a reason we all got this, and I assume it was not just to, you know, hit us with a bunch of numbers, but if, maybe an explanation why something went down, something went up, da-da-da-da-da. Okay. So do you want us to, are you looking for some direction right now about the May 5th meeting?
Yes, so if we could, if, if there is consensus among the board to move up the approval date to May 5th, thank you, I'm getting tired as I know everybody is.
After your, after your town hall?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got you.
Ms. McGee, a question for you. You say that we're going to go over.
That's up to the board. If the board wants to just make that a full meeting, or if you want to make it just for the budget purpose.
No, 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 I'm not asking.
One is enough. So that's what, if you make the motion, Ms. Dorsey, then maybe you want to include that in the motions.
You know, or, no, no, you know, $30,000 or, you know, why did something go down by 150, $60,000 under transportation? Does that mean we have fewer routes? Did we lose a bus driver? That was the kind of stuff I had.
Question, is that, so move it to the 5th, is that a, a motion that's needed for a vote?
Well, it is, and I think Ms. Dorsey had a comment, so I want to make sure the whole board gets that.
Yeah, I was already going to try to make a motion so that we can move the 12th up to the 5th and do anything then.
Well, we're still, we're still going to have a regular 12th meet, May 12th meeting. May 5th would just be about the budget, right?
Well, we could do it that way, or, I mean, just because I think the budget is a dominant conversation.
I was going to say, I wouldn't want to try to cram May 5th into the regular rest of the May meeting. It's the last meeting before graduation and a bunch of other stuff, so.
Okay, we'll have to read the rub.
Yeah, I know, hey, we went through this last year when we hired Dr. McComas, so.
It's good to get it.
You don't regret it yet, right?
On that way, the budget can get its own attention.
Yeah, that is the word, right?
So the May, the, so April 28th, which is already scheduled, is our budget, is a public hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
So we would be adding May 5th for your town hall, you're calling it virtual, but it's virtual in the sense that the public can participate virtually as opposed, although they're welcome to come here as well.
Exactly, welcome to come in person, but if it's more convenient because of your job location or.
And the only thing on that May 5th thing would be strictly budget, and then we would have a regular meeting on the 12th.
Mm-hmm.
Question about that, how will someone virtually be able to participate if they have questions?
There's the chat, or they can raise their hand, and, and the person who's working the technology for me will say, Dr. McComas, we have a caller on line nine, and their question is, I mean, I'm just trying to make light of, you know, the old call-in radio stations, but, but that's what it is. I mean, it's really, you know, my goal is to be directly accountable to everyone in an austerity budget situation so that no one's question goes unanswered, because it's important that everyone understand why, why we are where we are and what we're trying to do to move forward.
All righty, so are there any more questions before I ask for a motion about May 5th? Does anybody else ask, need some clarification? So I'm looking for a motion to add May 5th as a meeting. Dr. McComas is calling it a, a virtual town hall where one, I guess, one last opportunity to hear from the public and maybe to explain, and that's, you know, what, three weeks away, you may have additional information. Mr. Hushen may come to us and say, guess what? 25 people said they're retiring, you know? I don't know, but.
Oh, no, 25?
No, I know, but, but we, but we could, we could be as up-to-date as possible when we make a decision.
Yeah.
All righty, so that's, that's what I'm looking for. I'm, I'm looking for a, a motion for, for, for a May 5th meeting.
Would that time be 5:30?
That's, that's something else we can decide. I think that's probably a good idea.
I think so.
Yeah, is that a hardship for anybody, board-wise, to get here?
5:30 work for this, they said, okay.
I'll take off early, three days, three weeks.
Got you. So once again, I'm, I'm still looking for a motion for a town hall related to the budget for May 5th at 5:30 PM.
I bring a motion to move the date from May 12th to May 5th for the town hall virtual meeting at 5:30.
Right. The, the meeting is for us to make a decision, to vote on the budget.
Yeah, the vote on the budget will be made, so it's a town hall.
It's an extra meeting.
And it will also be, you'll be looking for us to approve the budget that night.
Right.
Right? Which we would have, what, done typically at the May 12th regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes, yes, it's like a week.
And we're still, and we're still going to have a May 12th meeting, we can just take the budget off of that.
Right, it'll be a normal.
Right, yeah.
Because the town hall meeting, the 28th, and then you want us to approve on the 5th, or you go to the commissioners on the 6th?
And the 28th is, is a public hearing, per se.
Yes, everyone's welcome to come in person.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So there's many, several touchpoints for the community.
Right.
To give voice to the process.
Got you, all right. So Mr. Queen, you want to sort of massage that motion a little bit better?
Yes, but I'll be too confused to do it all by someone else.
I would offer that you just, the motion is to have a budget meeting for the purpose of approval on May 5th.
Correct.
It's really just that simple. The town hall just happens to coincide closely in time. That's really my work and the board work.
Right, yeah. I'm not going to say it because I shouldn't, so.
I bring a motion for budget approval for Monday, May 5th at 5:30.
Yep.
Correct. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, is there any more discussion or questions about that? Got you. I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Just, Ms. Manley, Mr. Queen made the motion and Ms. McKenzie seconded. All righty. Thank you very much, Dr. McComas, thanks for that very extensive.
Star people right there, Mr. Wall. I'm going to have a sticker for you next time.
So the next thing is, we're moving to board discussion, and Ms. Swanson, I'll start with you.
Thank you. Feels like a rough act to follow, but I just want to thank Dr. McComas for working so hard on this budget process. This seems like it was probably heartbreaking to work on because of all this staff we have to let go and everything we have to cut out. And I'm just grateful, I know that you have the best intentions for the school system, so I know, I trust that this is the best that we're going to do, and I really appreciate that I have, that you, we have that relationship where I can trust you.
Thank you.
And I'm sad, but I know that this is what we have to do. And I'm very grateful that you took all the time to explain it to us, and we're so graciously answered questions, and I feel better about it.
Thank you.
Because you were, yes. And Ms. Stewart, for all of your work with the numbers. I can never, ever do that, but I appreciate you both. I also wanted to talk about the Board of Ed Retreat that we had over the weekend, which I'm sure all of you all will talk about too. It was interesting to learn about everyone's leadership philosophies and the vis, your visions for Kent County Public Schools. And I appreciate the diversity of personalities and perspectives that we have. I feel like we have a really good blend of leadership styles and, I don't know, I just think that we're better together as a team, and we know each other a little bit better. I want you all to know that I'm especially grateful for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts and experience, since I know I'm a kid in a room of adults, but I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me and letting me speak my mind. So thank you, and I hope you all enjoyed the event, the retreat, as much as I did. And I hope to do more of them in the future. Neither the Student Advisory Council or the American Exchange Project have many updates that I need to share, but I think I'll have some more significant progress by the time the next meeting comes around, pretty sure. As for some upcoming events that you may be interested in at the high school, as Dr. McComas mentioned, there is a, we have spring break this week, from Thursday, April 17th to Monday, April 21st, so short week, yay. Next week, the Kent County High School Brigade of Blue travels to Dollywood in Tennessee to compete against bands across the country and to have a lot of fun. That trip will last from Thursday, April 24th to Sunday, April 27th. And I'm in band, and I'm super excited about that. Looking forward to May, on Friday, May 2nd, Kent County High School will host the annual Mental Health Resource Fair. Monday, May 5th marks the start of both state and AP testing, which will continue throughout the month of May. It's going to be rough. Tuesday, May 6th is CTE Capstone slash Awards Night. Friday, May 9th is KCHS Ag Day, and Saturday, May 10th is the KCHS Prom, and the theme is enchanted. And that's all I really have today.
Feedback about you, Alden. The board retreat, I do appreciate you, for the child to be in an adult setting where we're kind of, I don't want to say iron and iron our differences, but getting to a place where we can successfully communicate with each other, for you to be in that place and share with us also. I appreciate you being vulnerable enough to be a part of that, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Rhodes?
I won't speak too long.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank Dr. McComas for all, again, for all the hard work you've done. This was a ma, this is a major job we have to do. And I have my thoughts, which I'm going to share. Last week, I attended the Certified Nursing Assistant Pining Ceremony, and 15 of our KCHS students completed the program. Mrs. Collison, Registered Nurse, has done a great job with Young Town, and Mrs. Hemstetter, you were involved in that, those kids did a great job. I was really proud to be there and see them, they were, they were all so happy. Also, in regards to the board retreat on Saturday, it was very informative, some great ideas came out, and in my opinion, all of us have carved out a good path moving forward at Kent County Public Schools. So Dr. McComas, I have one question for you. With the massive $418 million loss in pandemic era relief, and you might have gone over some of this, there's so much here, are we losing any programs because of that money? And how much money will we be losing out of that $418 million? Because it's going to be carved out through the whole state.
Are you ta, let me just clarify. First, let me just say, we're not losing any programs.
Okay, that's good.
Right? So that's, I've been trying to preserve those things so that the students, you know, our class size is really our sacrifice here. The programs I'm trying to preserve so students don't experience less, right? And is your other question about liquidation funds or about all of the grants that have?
The COVID grants that the government recently took out of the budget.
Right, so you're talking about, and just let me take a moment to clarify for everyone, everyone who's paying attention, so all of those grants that I showed on the screen that were the COVID grants that totaled up to 15 million, we in Kent County very diligently spend our money because we make the most of every dollar. very diligently spend our money because we make the most of every dollar. We had already spent the vast majority of everything prior to December 30. The only funds that we were in the process of still liquidating, and Ms. Stewart will correct me so that I don't misspeak here, we were still spending out some of the Maryland Leeds Grant Funds, and the only thing that we have not been reimbursed for, according to our records, is about $7,900. So, that is the amount that we will need to absorb at this point, that we are anticipating. We are in the process of reconciling with MSD-E, keeping in mind that, you know, we only keep track of their documents. MSD-E serves all 24 school systems, and of course, some of these school systems, the more densely populated ones like Montgomery County, of course, I can't even imagine the reconciliation process or working through it then. But, to our calculation, we have all of our documents in order, we will only need to absorb about $7,900 that we will not be reimbursed for. So, we're, in truth, we're in good order because we are a lean, mean, optimizing machine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so, in regards to our school system, the budget, in my opinion, we need to run this operation like a business. A business plan is only as good as there is a revenue stream to support it. Our board has the responsibility for our students, teachers, and all staff. We have the fiduciary responsibility involving trust between all of these groups, the county commissioners, and especially the constituents of Kent County. We have been elected to serve. I believe that Kerwin voted into law is a serious constraint to our way of life on the eastern shore and throughout the state. Word on the street is that this unfunded law might cause some counties to become insolvent. I will not let this happen to Kent County. My position is to hold the line on expenses. With the possibility of the Education Department closing, the cost of Kerwin, and the huge budget deficit in Maryland, we are in stress. Financially, liquidity is at a breaking point. Our governor and previous governor are finger-pointing to who's to blame. The bottom line is that all of us in this room will be paying substantially higher taxes. Kerwin is one of the driving factors. One more page and I'm done. So, last year, I attended an event involving our school system and others on the shore and western counties. Britt Kerwin was a guest speaker. He compared Kerwin to our space program in the 60s under the Kennedy administration. We can do it and make this happen. I had the chance to speak. My knowledge of the space program is fairly extensive. Presently, I'm working on a project for the early days of the program. With the opportunity to interview many of the engineers, the one common theme that emerged, Kennedy wanted us to go to the moon, and he had a very large checkbook. I asked Mr. Kerwin if Maryland had a checkbook for this unfunded law. Before Mr. Kerwin could answer, one of his budget people said no. From my personal understanding, by 2034, Kerwin, according to the Department of Legislative Services, will drastically increase the cost. Mr. Kerwin personally thanked me for my comments. Our governor was careful to point out that we need to have an understanding that good governance does not mean being dogmatic, said noting that continued adjustments are needed to ensure the blueprint is properly implemented. I do hope our legislatures will follow suit. The bottom line is that whatever the outcome, our children come first, always.
Thank you. Mr. Queen?
Thank you, President Trish. Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Dr. McComas, President Trish McGee, fellow board members, and the student body member. We in April, so, that's a good thing for us right now.
Graduation's coming.
Yes. But, over the past few weeks, there's been a lot of exciting news for Kent County Public Schools, and I just want to take a brief time to just highlight a few of them. I would first like to acknowledge Chris Hempstead for winning Principal of the Year at Kent County High School for the MASSP. This is an incredible honor for her personally, but for Kent County High School, and most importantly, Kent County Public Schools, and Hempstead, your leadership is appreciated, so kudos to you. I want to also say congratulations to the 2025 Support Employee of the Year, Ralph Johnson, who was an instructional assistant at the Kent Alternative Program, Kent County High School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Johanna Cohen, and Cohen, if I'm pronouncing that right. And also, he was awarded earlier, or celebrated earlier. Congratulations to Tyre Ray Johnson of Kent County High School, who was named the Bayside, North Bayside Coach of the Year for Girls' Basketball. I will be in attendance to celebrate these honorees along with Kent County Public Schools, already celebrated people this Wednesday, April 16, at the high school, and I invite our community to attend and celebrate with us as well. Monday, March 24, as chairman, I was able to attend my first community advisory meeting, and I just look forward to hopefully making that committee a viable resource for the board in Kent County Public Schools. Wednesday, April 2, I attended the National Honor Society Student Induction Ceremony at the high school, and a special shout-out, special shout-out. With a huge congrats and shout-out goes to my oldest daughter, Aria, who was inducted during the ceremony, and also, good luck to my youngest daughter, Peyton, who is currently in the process of applying for Junior National Honor Society at the middle school. Finally, I attended, as Alden mentioned, our Board of Ed Retreat with all board members, including Alden, to discuss best practices as Board of Ed members, and it was a chance to get to know each other's thoughts and perspectives, and hopefully, hopefully, well, I know it will, open doors for a foundation of communication. In closing, it was going to be about the budget, but a lot of it, we kind of went through, so I don't even want to say too much about the budget. So, overall, the last month or so, and few weeks of Kent County Public Schools have had a lot of positive highlights, and that's a good job for our public school system, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Queen. Ms. Dorsey?
Yes. I would like to thank Dr. McComas for scheduling our retreat, because it was, it was really a great experience, and really, with the report that just came on today, I'm so glad we had it. It helped us to understand one another better, long run, be able to work together in the setting that we have to work in. I felt excited. I felt refreshed. I walked away feeling positive. I'm looking forward to addressing issues that we are facing now and will be facing in the near future as elective board members, and, I mean, well, working together with elected board members and our student board member. I also want to congratulate Ms. Hempstead. I really, really think a lot of you, and I always appreciate when you, when we go to the graduation, and how you seem to know every student, or at least, you know, you let them know that they are somebody, and each one of them are important, and I believe that that's very important to them. I also want to thank Dr. McComas and Elise for their hard work on the budget, and everybody else that may have helped out as far as the Board of Education and the team, financial team, et cetera. I know this is not easy for us when it comes to balancing the budget, and it's not a good feeling with everything that we're going to have to do, but I'm just praying about it and hoping that with everything that we decide on, that no one's lost, no one's left out, no one has to go without. You know, sometimes, we may have a little, but a little can go a long ways, you know, if we use it correctly. So, I'm believing in you, and as Alden said, I trust you.
Thank you.
I do believe that you have Kent County Public Schools' best interests at hand, and it's a good feeling, in the midst of all that we're going through, to have our leadership begin, want to see the best for our students.
Thank you. Ms. McKenzie?
Sure, sorry I didn't take my glasses off. Just, I got to attend just some really awesome events that happened over the past month in our county, just highlighting the Trojan Trample, which is organized by Kent County High School PTSA. It was really fun, well-organized event where every dollar raised goes directly into scholarships for graduating seniors, helping them take the next step in their education and careers. I would encourage anyone to become a PTSA member as a great way to support your child's school. Also want to highlight the 5th Annual Community Resource Fair. Again, a well-organized and joyful event presented by our KCPS Family Support Resource Center that featured many local and state organizations. Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth Tusting and Dr. Keane. While it was great to network with so many local agencies, I especially enjoyed the display that featured our CTE programs. Kudos on the new video featuring our CT programs. Thank you, Mr. Porter. And the display for Makerspace, which is a great after-school program that provides hands-on opportunities for students to be creative using technology. I know my daughter really enjoys being a part of that program, and I look forward to being a chaperone for the field trip on Wednesday, so thank you, Mr. Porter. I also attended the Grocery Bingo at the Galena Firehouse for Galena Elementary School that was hosted by Galena Elementary School and the Galena Volunteer Fire Department, which was a benefit for Galena Elementary School's inclusive playground. Their current fundraising has reached a little over $38,000. Once they achieve 50% of their total cost, or $100,000, then there's grants that they could apply. So, certainly would encourage anyone to donate to that worthy cause. Generations Band Together was on March 30, and what an exciting and entertaining celebration of music that showcased students from our high school Brigade of Blue, playing with professional musicians from our community. The house was packed, and I'm just grateful I got to be there to witness the talented performances by our students, and also how our community rallied in support of music programming and raised $2,000 during the event for the Music Boosters. As Alden already mentioned, there's the upcoming trip. My daughter will be attending that as well, and they'll get to, of course, participate in various competitions and new sightseeing. It's another program that is not just a benefit to my daughter, but also a benefit to me as a parent, because it's one more positive connection for her, and these kinds of connections make a big difference in a child's life. Anyone can donate online to the Music Boosters via the Kent Cultural Alliance website, and please make sure to write a note in your online donation that it's designated for the Music Boosters. I also got to attend an event here at the, well, excuse me, at the high school, Protecting Teens in a Digital World: Internet Safety and Healthy Relationships, which was presented by For All Seasons. It was an informative presentation that featured how children and teens are targeted for exploitation, the signs that parents can look for to determine if their child may be targeted, and how to have the difficult but necessary conversations with them to protect them and to stay connected. Just information for my fellow board members, the FBI reports that over 50% of the victims of online sexual exploitation are between ages of 12 and 15. It's crucial for all of us to understand as parents, grandparents, and school staff that any child can fall prey to manipulation online, even children and teens from supportive families. In the virtual world, it's easy for kids and adults to be lured into a false sense of safety, and predators are patient. They know how to slowly expose a child's vulnerabilities. I strongly encourage any parent or family member to reach out to our staff for resources on how to be proactive about protecting your children and grandchildren from online predators. And I just want to say a special thanks to Courtney Miller, Kendall Savage, and Jessica Benefit for coordinating this much-needed presentation. I also got to attend the CNA Pining Ceremony. Mrs. Collison does an exceptional job running the nursing CTE program. It was wonderful to be there. My oldest son, Ethan, participated back in 2019, was his graduation year, and it was one of my most emotional moments back here for his senior year, and it was just, it was a blessing to just witness that again and see how many students are continuing to benefit from such a valuable program. As far as the board retreat goes, I very much appreciated the opportunity to engage with my fellow board members in a less formal space. I felt like it was a productive morning that led us to honing in on some areas for improvement that we can make together as a board. We all want to see our students achieve. We understand the importance of being engaged with our community that is depending on us to lead the way and advocate for our students' needs here in Kent County. And to Mr. Rhodes's point, advocacy includes communicating as a board when legislative mandates do or do not serve the needs of our students. And so, KCPS is striving for excellence at every level, and I certainly want to be an active partner in that process as a board member.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make it quick, because we've been here for a long time already tonight. The board retreat and the juxtaposition of the fact that we just went through, probably the most painful thing we're going to have to go through in a very long time, and we're going to have to make really hard decisions. So, the board retreat was delightful, honestly, beginning with the fact that they broke us up in whether we were cat people or dog people, which sort of set the tone, and it was, it really, I mean, I sent you guys all a text the next day, because I felt, I can't put into words, I felt like, you know, the gang from The Breakfast Club, you know? We all walked out of there, I mean, yeah, they're having their 40th anniversary now, but it just, I don't know, I felt really, really good. I felt close to you guys. I think we all let our guard down. We spoke very freely in some colorful language. It was over in the public. Mr. Wall heard some of that colorful language, and I just liked the fact that, I think that's why we were able to sort of approach tonight's really difficult thing about the budget, because we just have a much more cohesive understanding of what needs to be done. I want to thank Dr. McComas for her presentation, because it wasn't, even though it's a very austere and stark thing we're talking about, you made it human, I think, in ways that we could all understand, and you've made it very clear that you have turned yourself inside out to try to find every single penny that we can save, and you're going to continue to do that. So, I'm really appreciative of all the hard work you, and Ms. Stewart, and Mr. Hushin, everything that the team has done, and again, I can, I can't believe how much I enjoyed the retreat, you know? And I really did. So, it was great. And one of the things that Ms. McKenzie had said Saturday was trying to be present and let our students know that they're heard, and to show up for as many things as we can. So, I'm just letting you guys all know that tomorrow night at 6:30, the Interact Club is having their induction at the auditorium. So, there are, you know, I think it's really important for our students and our staff to see at least one of us at everything we can possibly do. So, I know that I'll be there. But, so, that being said, we're going to try to move on. I'm looking now for the 2025 graduation speakers, that you principal of the year.
And while she walking up, to Trish's point about us being there, because I know I've mentioned it, aren't we kind of working on...
Yeah, I will, as a follow-up to the board retreat, I'll work with our team to try to develop a methodology where we can, I'm actually just thinking like a simple Google survey, like we can push out to you, these are events coming up, and then you can indicate which ones, so then I can help coordinate and say...
One of the things just to let...
We've got everyone going to this one, because then we get it.
Just to let us know. I had no clue about the Galena Elementary School thing, so that was awesome. So, yeah. Alrighty, Ms. Hempstead, you have the mic.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening again, Dr. McComas, President McGee, KCPS members of the board, and our Kent County community. I'm here this evening to propose and provide information on the KCHS Class of 2025 graduation speaker, and yes, it's coming up very quickly. Usually, like, I think I had a meeting with the seniors the other day, and all we could say was, you know, you're at the top of the roller coaster right now, and you're getting ready to go down very quickly. So, it was a way that we could recognize that exciting things are happening, and it's going to go very, very quickly. So, I told them to make sure that they pause, then take it all in. So, tonight, the senior class of 2025 would like to officially invite the following individual to be our graduation speaker for the KCHS 2025 graduation ceremony that will be held on Friday, May 30. Mrs. Tynette Christie was born and raised on the eastern shore of Maryland, a graduate of Kent County High School, Class of 1995. She is the devoted wife of James Christie, and together, they are proud parents of four children, of which all... of which all graduated from Kent County High School 2013, 2016, 2021, and 2024. Tynette worked as the Guidance Secretary for Kent County High School from 2008 to 2016. Driven by a deep desire to help others, Tynette earned her degree in Psychology from the University of Phoenix. She currently works as a Grief Counselor for Compass Regional Hospice, providing compassionate support to individuals and families navigating loss. In addition to her counseling work, she is an entrepreneur who runs a jewelry business she loves. She also serves as a co-host of the podcast, It's Rare Talk. Tynette has a strong faith background and attends Work in Progress Ministries in Millington, Maryland, where she was ordained as an elder in October 2023. She dedicates much of her life to ministry and is passionate about serving others, which is very evident. For over eighteen years, she has been actively involved in her church, serving on various committees. However, her greatest passion remains working with youth. She is deeply committed to outreach and community ministry. For more than seven years, she led a Bible study for the female population at a local detention center. Additionally, she served as a volunteer Bible study facilitator for the Department of Juvenile Services for two years, mentoring incarcerated youth ages fourteen to eighteen. Now mentoring many young women in her community, Tynette leads both individual and group empowerment sessions, helping to inspire confidence and strength. Tynette was recently recognized as a bestselling author in 2024, contributing to an anthology alongside thirty-three other women. Beyond her ministry and writing, Tynette enjoys traveling the world with her family and remains open to new opportunities to serve. She is committed to making a lasting impact in the lives of those she encounters, and we are very excited to invite her to inspire the lives of our 2025 seniors on May 30th. So, the administration of Kent County High School recommends approval for Mrs. Tynette Christie as the KCHS Class of 2025 Graduation Speaker.
Alrighty, I'm looking for a motion to that effect, please.
Question. What's the process for the public to know on picking speakers? Is it a process?
We typically, yes, we have advisors of each of our classes. So, typically, if you're an advisor of the freshman class, there's usually two, then you just follow that class all the way up to be a senior. So, they talk to the seniors, kind of talk among the staff and the advisors, and they throw out names and then come to, you know, they usually come up with two or three, and then they reach out to them to see who may be available to speak. And then they bring it to me, and then I bring it to you.
Alrighty, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey's made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie has seconded that. Is there any more discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. Thanks, Ms. Hempster.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty, Administrative Services, is that you, Ms. Stewart? Alrighty.
Members of the Board, Student Board Member, tonight we're going to go over the Expenditure and Revenue Report as of March 31st, up until July, September 7th to March 31st. As you will see here, for Fund One, we have received about thirty-two million. Fund Three, nothing to do. And Fund Five, which is our Food Service, about a million. Dollars to, in our total, to cash receipts as of March 31st, thirty-three million, fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. We're looking at our current expense spend on average to date. We have expended about seventy-nine percent of our funding. We have a remaining balance of three-point-four, one-point, three-point-four million. Our school construction, that is just fine to me, the last minute touches of the KCHS, KCHS, so nothing really here. Then our Food Service, to date on average, we have expended about sixty-six percent for Food Service. And then with our Restricted Funds, the style of our grant funding on average to date, we've expended about forty-seven percent of our Fund, Restricted Funds sources. And then the last slide is just the combination of our volunteers and expenditures in a graph. Any questions? This is just for information.
Just for information. Thank you very much.
Well, one quick question, because we're not going to hold you with the budget as long as we've been up here talking about it already. Do you foresee any savings coming from now to the end of the year? That go back into the pot?
Yes, we don't have a dollar now on the local side. We want, the budget's closed tomorrow and the day tomorrow. We will have most of our billing up until end of March process within the next couple of weeks. And our goal is to pull a report, go through it, sit down with Dr. McComas, devise, pretty much see where our fund balance is looking on the local side. We do have Restricted Funds, but we wait until the end to do the recovers. And that is roughly about, I would gauge about half a million dollars that we will have in savings from, just all Restricted Grants from the current grants that we do have now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you the Meals of Hope Mini Grant?
Meals of Hope.
You're my next one?
Yes.
Sorry.
I sufficiently wore everyone out earlier, so. To include myself.
Just sorry. So, I'm just requesting board approval of the Meals of Hope Mini Grant. This essentially was a grant that was awarded by the Chestnut Town Rotary Club and was awarded to the High School Interact Club. And the grant is called Meals of Hope, and it's an amount of two thousand dollars. And the purpose of the grant funds is to provide ten thousand more to the families in need in the community. Since this is a new grant, we need it for board approval. And the administration is requesting that the board approve that Meals of Hope Mini Grant.
I will just add that I volunteer twice a week at the Community Food Pantry, and that's where the Meals of Hope packages landed, and they've been very well-received at the food pantry.
That's awesome.
So.
Let me make sure I understand. So, the money's been awarded to the Interact Club, and the meals go to students here or to the community?
No, they, they, they use the money to, I guess, buy supplies and they make, it's soup is actually what it is. They, it's like a conveyor belt kind of thing. And they package like vacuum-sealed soup that finds its way to people who are in need.
In the community, not just students.
Yeah.
It's really Interact, you know, Rotary is a service club, right? So, it's about, the funding gives the students the money to buy the supply so that they can then do this food service.
Yes, understood.
And Interact is the youth arm of the Rotary Club.
Yes.
Alrighty, so I'm looking for approval for the Meals of Hope Mini Grant. Is there a motion to that effect?
A motion for the approval of the Meals of Hope Mini Grant.
Mr. Queen made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Dorsey has the second. Is there any more discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alrighty, that one has passed as well. Ms. Knoll and Cloverland Dairy? And Ice Cream?
No money for ice cream.
President McGee, Dr. McComas, Members of the Board. I'll make this very quick. We are asking to piggyback for our Cloverland Farms Dairy contract through Wacomiko County. This will allow us to receive our milk and milk coolers. We piggyback off of them because it makes it easier for a small county like that. So, we're asking for approval to have that go. That bid goes until June 30th, 2026, with two periods of renewals possible.
And are we, are we already involved in this with them? So, we're just renewing it?
Renew, an extension of it, yes.
Alrighty, administration requests, requests board approval to piggyback off the Wacomiko County renewal contract with Cloverland Dairy. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie's made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Queen has the second. Is there any discussion or questions? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? It's unanimous, Ms. Manley. Now, on to the ice cream.
Ice cream. So, we are asking for approval to piggyback off of the Hershey's Creamery Company contract through Baltimore County Public Schools. We were currently under a piggyback off of, I believe it was Cecil County, and they, or no, Anarundel County, I apologize. So, we are now moving over to Baltimore County. The bid is still the same, everything is still the same. Everybody's just kind of moving over to Baltimore County for the ice cream and cookies, and then as well as the coolers for those. So, we are asking for approval to join that bid up until March 31st, 2028.
Alrighty, thank you very much. I'm looking for a motion to approve piggybacking off the Baltimore County Public Schools contract with Hershey Creamery?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
We're piggybacking because we're a small school, school county, correct? Alright, I bring a motion to approve.
Is there, Mr. Queen has the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie has a second. Are there any more questions? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Alrighty, that passes. Red Acres?
Alright, we are asking for the board approval to piggyback off of the Red Acres Hydroponics LLC contract for Caroline County Public Schools. We are currently within that bid. This is an extension going through June 30th, 2026, with two periods, one-year, one-year periods for optional renewal.
Alrighty, I'm looking for a motion to approve piggybacking off the Caroline County Public Schools renewal contract with Red Acres Hydroponics.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Queen has the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie has the second. Are there any questions? I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from that. I work for them on the farmer's market on Saturdays. So, the vote is four in favor and one abstention. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hushin?
President McGee, Dr. McComas, School Board Members, hello again. Tonight, I'm bringing forward two policies for review and discussion. They are related. The first one is Policy DFE, which deals with gate receipts and admissions. It's a short policy, as you can see. Currently, Kent County High School for Athletic Events into the stadium and gym currently charge five dollars for adults, one dollar for students. And the rates are similar, actually the same, I believe, at Kent County Middle School for Modified Basketball. This policy was last revised in 2011. It is now 2025, so just wanted to open it up for discussion with all of you to see if there are any further thoughts and possible changes.
First change I would want to discuss is not charging our students. We just heard about budgeting and money and lack of money. Is that something we would be interested in doing? With that question, what is the money actually used for?
So, add to that.
I can answer that.
Dr. McComas, we'd love to take that one.
I get a little punch happy after like eight-thirty at night, so. Yeah, so we had this discussion earlier in September. The gate receipts come back to help offset the costs of athletics, primarily transportation, right? So, it goes back into the fund to help go towards athletics. Transportation's our biggest, you know, expense and, you know, that's just, and it can be unpredictable. You know, we want every team to go to the championship, but every time they make it to the next round, that's more runs that we're doing. So, it goes back in to help offset. Did I get that right, Ms. Stewart?
Right, and I would like to add, gate receipts, the amount that we give, we're not compared to the expense going out for athletics. So, although I understand what you're saying.
I got you.
Oh, I can give you the price tag. I had Ms. Stewart pull for me how much it costs to run our athletics program. Please give me the moment to share that, just for general purposes related to the budget.
While you're looking for that, do you mind if I call on Ms. Dorsey? Go ahead, Ms. Dorsey.
Well, I just wanted to kind of like piggyback off of what Mr. Queen was saying when he was asking about the students. And I understand that, you know, it really helps out and everything, but we don't have many activities and extracurriculum around for our, the students to attend after-school hours. And a lot of them can't afford the dollar, especially if you have three or four siblings and you all want to come. I'm not saying not to, but I can imagine how it feels when you just can't.
I imagine.
And they already don't have anything else to do, so.
I've often thought that I wish our kids, our students could go for free because the teachers can go for free. And I feel like, I mean, I've been to a lot of games and a lot of gyms over forty years, and the other teams' gyms are always packed. And I would hope that maybe this would be a way to get more student involvement in supporting our kids. There's nothing worse than playing in your own gym and there's nobody there to support you. So, I'm just saying there's another side to that. And like I said, I don't understand why a teacher can go for free, but a student can't.
And we can get into that with the next policy that deals with that exact topic, but.
If you want to combine the conversation.
Well, they're two different policies.
Yeah, they're two different policies.
And right now, just for information, are you coming back to us next month for a vote?
Well, I'm not proposing any changes right now. This is just to bring this to your attention for discussion. And based on how these two conversations go, you know, with them being separate policies, perhaps I will come back with some proposed changes with direction from Dr. McComas after we hear from all of you. But that's why I'm bringing these together, because they are related.
Let me ask this, because I think I did receive an email that said something to this effect. Let's say I'm at the gate and I'm collecting the money, and ten youth come in, and I know four of them don't got it, don't have the funding to get in, whether it's a dollar, whether it's fifty dollars. And I let those people in. How are we watching the accountability at the gate to actually ensure this is being processed correctly? And if we're, I don't want to call it a money grab, so to speak, because I know it doesn't affect the overall athletic funding, but how are we being accountable on our end to make sure we're being fair? Because I know dealing with kids in the community, if ten kids say they're going to meet me at the game and I get there, I'm paying for five of them. And I'm looking at them like, you don't have the dollar to get any in it. Like, not really. So, I kind of think, because I know we'll talk about it with free admission and we'll go deeper into it, but. Our superintendent said earlier, our students are our biggest asset. I think in the light of some of the things that's going on financially, at the state, federal level, locally, we're already taking a bullet with money. I think we need to show as a school system that the students are first, and we are caring about them. And something as small as a gesture, as waiving a dollar fee might go a long way with some of the youth.
So, something that I'll add, you know, when we talk about other high schools in the Bayside Conference, Kent County High School historically has charged the lowest fee for quite some time. What I can do for you, if interested, is I can reach out to those schools to see what their policy is on how they charge students.
Well, and not every, not every sport pays. Now, if you're in the stadium or you're in the gym, but if you're going to a tennis match, you're going to a field hockey game, if you're going to a cross-country race, those things are free. So.
So, maybe.
It's really the games inside the stadium and inside the gym.
Which are the bigger sports?
That usually draw.
I know, I get it, yeah.
Question, concession money, is that included in gate fees? Or is those, are those two different?
That's separate, that can go through high school fundraisers, that can go through the booster clubs, they're two.
Understood.
Is the fundraisers, do that help with the fees for athletics? For that particular sport?
Or are the fundraisers for?
Or just doesn't help with like the transportation?
Yeah, so fundraisers that teams do usually go to help either students perhaps with uniforms or equipment. So, it doesn't really go to offset, you know, transportation because they're doing it for a specific fundraising purpose. Kind of like, it's a different example, but like Galena's raising funds for their playgrounds. So, a team does it that way.
But I think to your point, Ms. Dorsey, at the high school level, it's to supplement the athletic budget. I think at the middle school, it is more like a fundraiser for the school. I think at the middle school, it is more like a fundraiser for the school and the programs.
Can this also be a thought? If we keep the dollar amount on the students, maybe incentivize them for a marking period of maybe free games? Because what's the chances of a kid going to every game in the stadium, in the gym? So maybe something with perfect attendance or honor roll, they get to get an incentive of maybe a quarterly season pass to some of those games. Because I, I would assume it really matters in fall and winter, because like she just said, spring sports and summer sports are outside. So maybe, you know, the fourth quarter marking period incentivized kids coming into the beginning of the year. So that way, we at least gave a chance for them to focus on earning that incentive, so to speak.
Another incentive may be, because everybody may not be top-notch with the grades, but how about attendance? Which would help to improve their grades. Because right now, we have a, it seems to be where attendance is down. And if you were to, you know, if you were not incentive, maybe they would come.
That's a great idea, I think.
Because they want to come to the games.
Yeah, I think both your points around how do we incentivize? And I would say, you know, certainly I too would, you know, I'd never want to deny students an opportunity to, one, be in a safe, supervised, productive environment, and then two, school spirit, you know, all of those good things that come with it. So I just offer that, I think, whether we decide to charge students or not, and forgive me, Ms. Stewart, you may disagree with me. But I mean, just to give you a perspective, our total athletic program cost us $234,720.52 approximately. So the whole athletic program, no matter what we're charging at that gate, we're not going to raise enough money to off, to truly offset. I mean, what we, what does come in, we put towards it because it's just feeding the program, but.
Alright.
Two questions, one of them is based off some of the information you used about like, right in the ship, so to speak, and downsizing by having both boys and girls drive together on transportation. Do we have, we have the number for the athletic program, but do we have the number on how much money the gate might actually bring in so we can have a comparison? So if we're looking at almost a quarter of a million dollars and we're only getting $8,000 or $5,000 to $7,000, maybe that's, I don't want to say eat it with the budget, but earlier today with one of the grants, it was $7,000, we have to eat. Maybe something like that, we take a look at, if we have that number as well.
Yeah, I think that's something Ms. Stewart may be able to.
Gate receipts can vary between anywhere between $15,000.
Up at the high school, though.
Yeah, high school, high school, yeah, yeah.
At the high school.
Yes.
So 15, 18,000.
Considerable amount.
So you said that it was 200?
Yeah, if we look at the total cost of our athletics program, it's approximately $234,720.52. That's comprised of, the lion's share of the cost is really our coaches, right, paying, again, our people. So we spend approximately $83,925.33 in paying coaches.
How much you paying, spend in transportation?
I don't have the specific transportation broken down, but I can tell you, we spent, sorry, Ms. Stewart, give me a moment, then you can, you can, I'll be shocked, you be all, okay? For transportation, supplies, repairs, security, and medical supplies combined, we spend approximately $150,795.20.
And what was, what was the coaches?
The coaches is 83,000, sorry, not the lion's share, but still 83,925.33.
Is that the total from the high school and the middle school?
Just the high school, Ms. Stewart?
Which is the high school.
Because the middle school used more like fundraisers. Let me ask this, I know we're using words like community partners with the emphasis tonight kind of on the county commissioners because of the budget. But we have community partners that might give that type of money to kind of alleviate the strain, so to speak. So I don't want to, you know, I'm just throwing out organizations, but maybe the local management board, maybe the Rotary Club that already give to our school system. Have we thought about going to them and say, hey, listen, here's what we're trying to do to incentivize our students, would you be interested in? Let's say the number's 20,000, if you get 2,000 from 10 organizations, you meet that quota and the kids don't have. Just in the same thing like we did with the calendar, just going back to the table with more innovative, innovative ways to think about how we service the students best.
Agreed, we're open to ideas, sorry, Mr. Hushen, Demina.
Oh, I'm good. Any further questions or are we ready to kind of transition into that next policy?
Transition to that. The second one's the free admission.
Yeah, so.
I got some thoughts on that.
So I wanted to bring this forward as well, policy DFEA, originally adopted in 2001, and I don't believe it has be, has been revisited since. So this deals with free admissions. You will see in the policy that there are different classifications of who is not charged. Some of you have just spoke about that, but the first category is citizens age 65 or older. To your point, Mr. Queen, this is one of those things that I think over time, for whatever the reason is, we'll acknowledge there's work to do there, it was probably inconsistent. All school employees, Kent County Board of Education members, and other individuals who have made significant contributions to the school system through donation of their time or money. I personally, you know, have some questions about other individuals.
I have questions about, I mean, that's so subjective.
Yeah, I was going to let President Trish go first, but I heard this actually.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, a couple of things, that's way too subjective and that is not going to be consistent because, or the individuals is approved by the superintendent, every time you have a new superintendent, that's going to change. You know, plus it puts a burden on the person who's taking the money, you know?
Then there's going to be like a special gate list that's.
Yeah, so, but all you have to do is pull out your driver's license to prove you're 65, you know, that, you know. All you have to do is pull out your ID to prove that you're a teacher or you're a student or a Board of Education member. I think those last two things need to go because it's too subjective.
Agree, and then the perception of it, so someone who, keep in mind, we just talked about families and kids that don't have one to $5. So imagine waiting in line or waiting for your, your friend or your homeboy so you can pool in money to try to get in. And here comes John Queen because I gave a donation to get a banner up somewhere, walking right past and not even paying. With a school system where 80% of our public is in poverty, it sends a bad message with, there's already a perception in this county of the haves and haves not. So when you have that type, and it's a very gray area too. So when you have that, who are you really supporting and who are you for? And then the other one to Trish's point about the superintendent, no need.
So the only thing that I'll, that I'll speak to that, and you may, you may not be aware, but the State Athletic Association actually gives a bunch of passes to every athletic director that, at the superintendent's discretion, can be provided to folks that will not only get you into our own games, but will also get you into a state athletic sanctioned event at a, in another school.
Yes.
So, you know, that is already a procedure put forth by this, by the State Athletic Association that the superintendent can direct us to handles out to whoever it is. So I don't even really know if these two things need to be in policy, because we already know, we get this allocation and the superintendent can distribute that on a year-to-year basis.
So let me, so I'm going to use my own experience, so I'm going to put you on the hot seat for a second. Do you have some of those and have you given them out?
Good question.
I don't think so.
Is, I used to get one as a Board of Education member, and two years ago, Dr. Couch had them locked up like, I don't, I mean, first of all, they were limited, she only had a certain amount. And I don't think, I don't think even all board members got them, you know, and I had to know to go ask her, I don't think people even knew to ask them. I just, I just don't like the fact of, to speak to Mr. Queen's thing, I don't like things that aren't fair. I'm big about fair and favoritism, and if, if Mr. Queen could afford to have bought a banner, he could afford the $2 to go in and pay in to go to a basketball game.
I feel that all the board members should pay to get in, I think it's our responsibility, we're on the board, we should pay to go to the games, that's my opinion.
Wait a minute.
Slow down now, slow down, friends, slow down, slow down.
Now, I'm going to say like this, and I'm gonna tell you why.
See, this is what the board retreat does. Because I'm going to tell you why. Because it's just like with other employees that are employees of the Kent County Public Schools, they have incentives. Now, we know they say, you get paid, well, you know, we don't really get paid like that. I can go into a free game considering, and I'm, and I'm willing to pay for a child if I saw one there, but I'm just saying, there may be a low day. Especially if, if it goes off any kind of incentive we get.
Right, well, what, here's what I would offer, any, any faculty, staff member, Board of Education member, if you're at a game, you may not realize that you're on duty. Because all, all adult supervision is needed all the time, right? So that's what I know, when I go to events, if there's faculty and staff, even if they're sitting and enjoying the game, if something happens at a moment's notice, I can be like, you, you and you, up here, we're doing this, that's got, something's got to happen. So I just offer that, that, you know, I would, you know, you show up, I might put you to work, so. So I hear we have revisions, we have revisions that we will bring back.
The one piece I want to visit is back to the issue around student fee. Which was discussed in the last policy, but is probably appropriate for here. Is there direction about that, or, you know, we just want to leave as is and kind of focus on the two things that we have?
So here, here's a, here's a question too. Is it any student? Like, I mean, can an elementary school kid, because we get a lot of middle school kids that'll come to a basketball game. Are we talking only about Kent County High School kids coming to a Kent County High School event?
Good question.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the middle school too, don't.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, they have basketball, yeah, yeah.
High school, they may actually have a little job, but.
Yeah.
Middle school, I'll give a donation towards them, students. I still would like to have.
And there are, and yes, and Gail just broke a good point about, you know, student supervision.
Yeah, yeah, that is, yeah, you don't want 25.
Which is, which is something we started to address this year through our communications when we were dealing with some of the issues that we had, you know, down at St. Michael's and then as well at home when we played kind of what you're saying.
But the attendance is kind of normally low for the two. I would say the outside would be football, inside would be basketball. I didn't see a decline in attendance over the last decade to where, how many more people do we assume will come tops? Because here's the thing also with kids, transportation is an issue in Kent County. So someone in Chestertown, unless they're carpooling, is not going to be able to get out to the high school anyways. And a lot of the games start around times where parents get off, a lot of parents aren't going to commute home, jump in the car and come to a game, they're going to try to handle their household issues. So it's kind of an area where I don't see the benefit of charging a student $1.
Alden, you're a student, yeah, what do you think?
Great question.
I agree, I don't think that the benefits outweigh, I, I just don't see the point in charging students if we're not getting anything from it, and I think it would. I don't know that waiving the fee is gonna increase our numbers that much as, as much as like giving access to transportation or whatever. But I don't see a point in having that. And also, like, I don't carry around cash, I have my debit card, like, I, I don't. If we're, if we're thinking about how a student's doing, it's also.
They got Apple Pay.
They have Apple Pay.
What about offsetting it, since the adults pay $5 now, making it six?
Well, you know, I, I think because we're going back, and I say going back to the 65 and over because it is in policy, there were signs that were made and donated. You know, the, the school and the superintendent, you know, that's something we can have the authority to do to raise.
I think these are good questions because this policy hasn't been looked at in 20, 40 years.
Now, I will.
That's two generations of kids coming through.
So let me ask a question about the senior citizens, because it's perceived that Kent County is a place of retirement. So if it is a place of retirement, a lot of people 65 and older, first of all, I doubt a lot of them are coming to our games.
They can't get up on a bench.
And they, they might.
I'm over 65 and I can get up, okay?
Financial means anyway, so to speak, and, because I, just because it's a sign that says 65 and older, doesn't mean we as a board have to commit to that at all.
Well, we have to commit to it right now because it's in policy.
Well, yes.
So that's, that's why it's on that sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do they really know about it, where's this posted?
So it's actually new, the Booster Club donated the signs just within the last two months. And they're going to be posted right outside of the gym doors. When I was up there last week, it wasn't up yet, but they did show me where it was going to go.
Well, question, are we, the Booster Club is a separate entity, right?
Correct, it, it was a, it was a donation.
So our decision should be no way hindered by what they're doing, correct?
Correct, they only, they only made the signs based off of what.
Oh, but based on the policy.
They're following the current policy.
Yeah, that's a, by, by, by no way, there was any ill will on their part, they were just, you know, trying to bring something.
Helping out, pitching an argument.
Nice, so.
On this list for me, for free. School employees, especially after hearing the budget, they, yeah, school employees, Board of Ed members, and students would be my recommendation for who's free. Everyone else would be subject to pay, in my opinion.
Ms. Dorsey, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just trying to get clear on the 65 and older was free.
I think teachers should be able to get in, but we're on the board, I think we should contribute money to these kids, that's my opinion.
Well, you can, because you donate a lot.
Doesn't make a difference, I think we should do that, that's my opinion.
So.
So we're not going to hide anything tonight, this is.
No, I'm sorry, I, I think we should.
We're not going to, we're going to come back next month and we're just asking questions.
Ms. Dorsey wanted clarity of who's free right now, 65 and older is actually free right now, correct?
Yes, so in, in, in policy right now, it's citizens aged 65 or older, all school employees, Kent County Board of Education members, and then the other individuals who have made significant contributions and other individuals as approved by the superintendent. I think what I will do, here in the healthy conversation we just had, is we'll work with Dr. McComas, we'll bring back some draft changes for first read for next month, and then possibly have to bring it back again in June.
Well, I have a good, I just have a quick question just for the Board General, just given the email that we received from the boosters, you know, I, I'm not as heavily involved with athletics. And so I guess, I mean, their appeal was that we would continue waiving the fee for 65, does that?
You mean like, does that have any bearing on our decision?
Yeah, I guess, I'm just curious, I'm honestly surprised that that recommendation is not as supported as I thought it would be, that's all.
I know, I'm not, I'm not as, as supportive of 65 and older, I do have a heart for the 65.
The elderly.
Yes, I don't want to say elderly, the season.
My wheelchair's outside the door, okay, thank you.
But I mean, it's, it's, it's a balance, so if we're trying to supplement what we're trying to give students free access to it, then who would fit the bill, so to speak, you know what I mean?
Maybe we could just make theirs lower.
Oh, I have adjusted fee for our senior.
This is a good time to be having this discussion, we can get it all straight before the date.
And that's why we're bringing brought forward now, so that, you know, we can have this settled by the time Fall Sports Report in August.
We're on record for Queen, Board of Ed members, Kent County Public School employees, and then whatever tickets Dr. McComas or had in her closet. Those will be.
Well, that's a very procedure, so I don't think we have to put that in policy.
I think those are the options.
I thought we were going to make up that $1.8 million deficit.
I'm going to save $3,000.
So I don't want to eat up a lot of your time, especially what we went through, but I, but I think we have some good direction and feedback where we'll bring some proposed changes and continue to have a healthy conversation on this topic.
Yes, and I'm not going to argue with the others, pay the fee, if you guys don't want to pay, that's fine.
We haven't decided, we haven't decided.
Just do what you want to do. I know, but you're all.
No, we're not, no, we're not, no, we're not, we're not. Alrighty, no, we're not, can we move on? I think, I think we have one more, how about this, if any particular board member has something they'd like you to consider, can they email you and say, hey, these are my particular names?
Actually, you could have them email me. Actually, you can have them email me, and I will.
Alrighty, we have got one more public participation, Mr. Wall, you heard me say earlier about the three minutes and all that jazz, alrighty. So you let me know when you're ready, sir.
Thank you, you all know him, the numbers guy. Dr. McComas, I'm going to request that you get with the Public School Superintendent Association of Maryland's group and initiate legislation collectively, power in numbers, as you say, to have an obligated review of the blueprint, because this is not going to give me easier fiscal year. We're at eight hundred thousand dollar deficit right now, that's going to jump to one point seven million next year, next fiscal year. We're in fiscal year twenty-six, let me read you some numbers, this is from the Department of Legislative Services, twenty-three million, seven hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-five million, one hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-six million, six hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-nine, twenty-nine million, three hundred thousand dollars in fiscal year thirty. This continually goes up, and we're not going to be able to afford it. If you think you're having a hard time now with eight hundred thousand dollars, what are you going to do with one point six million, one point seven million next year? Over the next three years, it averages one point, one point five million average increase every fiscal year, and then you jump two and a half million, which the state knows, at twenty-thirty. This program is going to cost Kent County, collaring or the blueprint versus non-blueprint, fifty-five million, seven hundred thousand dollars over the cost, over the course of implementation, and that's the new DLS numbers. Get with your other superintendents, there's power in numbers, you all agree, we all agree, this is unaffordable, somebody's got to speak up. I know your association is all for the blueprint, but as Frank yet said, coattailing on him, this is unaffordable, it's going to bankrupt the state, it's going to bankrupt the county. The numbers speak for themselves, it's data, quantitative and qualitative data. We're in deep cock-a, ladies and gentlemen, and it's not going to get any easier, Rita, this is really tough stuff, all of you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, so, just a reminder, so we are due back here two weeks from today on April twenty-eighth for a public hearing on the budget at five-thirty. We're going to come back the following week on May fifth, to, Dr. McComas is going to be looking for us to approve that budget because she's going to head to the commissioners the following day. The next regularly scheduled monthly meeting is going to be Monday, May twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, beginning at five-thirty with the open session, open session will immediately followed by the board members going into closed session, the open session will resume at six-thirty P.M. I just want to remind you that the April twenty-eighth meeting and the May fifth meeting are at five-thirty. If you have any questions, if for some reason five o'clock mysteriously shows up somewhere, the meetings are at five-thirty. Alrighty, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dorsey made that a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rhodes seconded, I call, is there any conversation, does anybody not want to go home? Alrighty, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?